Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor of Temecula, and I am calling this city council meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation this evening by Pastor Wesley Savio of the Reliance Church, and that will be followed by yours truly leading the flag salute. So Pastor, are you with us?
I am right here.
I see you.
Awesome. Hi, everyone, my name is Wesley and I serve on the pastoral staff here at Reliance Church in Temecula.
I'm going to have everyone stand for the invocation and we'll remain standing for the flag, for the flag salute. So it's all yours Pastor.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for gracing all of us with another day of life. We're grateful for the opportunities you've placed in our paths and we ask for the courage to step boldly into those areas that you've prepared for us. Thank you for our city council members and I pray that you would make your wisdom and discernment known this evening as we cover all the details in the agenda. According to your word, where there is no vision, the people fail, but in a multitude of counselors, there is victory. We thank you for blessing us with a great city to live in and to raise our families in, and we pray that each citizen would not simply look out for their own benefit, but for the well-being of their neighbor as well. We pray for the health and safety of our city service members, our first responders, and all those who are charged with the security and prosperity of the city of Temecula. We also pray for the health and safety for all of our kids, our teachers, and our schools. Lastly, we want to remember everyone who is sick and those who are suffering, not just from COVID-19, but those who are suffering from the reality of sin in a fallen world. We ask that you would be gracious and merciful towards them, and that you would give them and their families peace during this trying time. And now, to the King of the ages, immortal, invisible, the only God, be honor and glory forever and ever. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, placing your right hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated if you were standing. And Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call please? Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schrank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
We have a special presentation this evening, presentation and proclamation for, it's the DMV Donate Life Month, and with us, we have Erica Heranik. Did I say it right Erica?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Oh, good. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, you have a copy of the proclamation, but I would like to just read a little bit of it, so that our viewers know what it's all about. City of Temecula proclamation, whereas organ, eye tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting, and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives last year, the most ever, and whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, whereas over 17 million Californians have signed up with the state authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure that their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored, and whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying or renewing their driver's license, which I have done, or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.don, it's D-O-N-E, V-I-D-A, California.org. Whereas California residents interested in saving a life through liver, living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, I'm Mary Ann Edwards, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 to be DMV Donate Life Month. So you are making a difference because there were more donors than ever, more transplants than ever last year, so thank you for your efforts and the combined efforts of, you know, organizations from across the country. So thank you for being here. Would you like to tell us a little bit?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I appreciate you guys, thank you for issuing this proclamation, because actually I wouldn't be here without a donation. My name is Erica Heranik. I've lived in this area for 31 years with my husband, raising my family. I'm a One Legacy Ambassador. One Legacy is the donate life for seven counties in Southern California, responsible for nine transplant centers and 215 hospitals. That includes Rancho Springs, Loma Linda, Inland Valley, and Temecula Valley. One Legacy is the one that receives the call and facilitates lifesaving actions between the hospital and transplant centers. I am also a heart transplant recipient, four years post this Monday, April 19th, thanks to my donor Dylan Stuff, and you can see him on the slide, and he's also sitting next to me. He was 19 years old, a Cal Baptist University student, who was on his way home for Easter in 2017 when he had a tragic car accident. He was my match and saved my life. I do have a little picture I can hold up if some people can see. This is what I looked like.
Yes, we can see.
Yeah, I had killer arrhythmia, so I was confined to a wheelchair, and I was knocking at death's door, in fact, the few weeks before my last rites had been given. So I'm eternally grateful for a second chance and truly blessed to be able to join forces with his mom Dana in order to honor Dylan's and share his legacy. So I'd like to thank you and the council members of Temecula for your continued support for Donate Life Month, which encourages organ, eye, and tissue donation and registration. As you said, with that increase in awareness, there was an incredible rise in lives saved and healed in our communities in 2020 during these trying times. Again, 1,661 lives saved, 190,000 healed, those are benefiting burn victims, breast cancer reconstruction surgeries, knee replacements, valve replacements, just to name a few, and that's truly incredible. As you know, more residents in Temecula have been directly impacted in the last five years, either as a donor family, a recipient, one who's diligently waiting for a transplant, or perhaps lost a loved one who was waiting. In fact, a week and a half ago, a 14-year-old girl born with a congenital heart defect passed away waiting for a lifesaving work. I know a current resident in Temecula, a couple months ago made the liver transplant list, so hopefully she'll get that surgery. And then a gentleman, and I was in a retail store, shared that his young son got his kidney transplant, is doing well, and is now back in school. But again, unfortunately, there's a waiting list on transplant that's still pretty significant. As you said, we're close to 108,000 that are on the list, many waiting 11 years, many also traveling out of state, because like you say, and we've said, 17 people pass away on average a day, and just as many are getting right back on that list. So our hope is to see more individuals in our community consider registering as a donor, so that down the line, you might be that match while leaving a legacy. Please consider being a silver lining, as my donor mom calls me. So check for your driver's license. If you're registering for your real ID, check that box, and again, donatelife.california.org. You can get on the website and do that today or tonight. If you're already a registered donor, please spread the word, because you don't know, you might help pigs fly. Now, I'm a retired teacher, and past students came to visit when I was sick, and they brought me a stuffed animal, pig, with wings on it.
Oh.
It touched me that, you know what, with organ donation, pigs do fly. So I thank you for your support and continued support for Donate Life Month. Blessings to all.
Thank you for being here Erica. You are a walking miracle, thanks to the gentleman in the picture right there. So, thanks to his family as well, it's very good to see him. We have good friends who lost their son and stood by the bedside and made the decision to donate organs, and it was probably the most difficult decision they've ever made, but now they know it was the best decision they've ever made because of all the people's lives that were saved.
And I know it's not something that everyone wants to talk about, but if someone has already registered, when tragedy does happen and they are already registered and you've had that conversation with your family, it kind of, it kind of eases it just a little bit more because you're honoring their legacy and you're knowing you're saving lives. Dylan saved five lives and 215 tissue samples were recovered. That's how many lives he impacted, and he was known for his hugs and he played volleyball and everything, so I do whatever I can with his mom to honor that. But thank you.
That's very nice. So encouraging everyone to, it's really easy when you're at the DMV, and I've done it, and they give you a little dot to put on your, to stick on your driver's license, and it's that simple, and then your family doesn't have to make that decision if the time comes.
Right.
So thank you for that great reminder.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we are going to have our Board and Commission report, and I am going to call on Eric Levine first from the, what we call the FUN Commission, the Community Services Commission.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council, staff, colleagues, and citizens. I'm happy to say I'm a proud donor. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But in terms of community services, spring has officially sprung, and to no one's surprise, we have a great selection of contract classes for everyone from youth to adults, in-person as well as at-home virtual classes, and anyone can register today at temeculascadotgov/tcst. On Friday, April 16th at 5:00, our High Hopes Group will meet with via Zoom for a color and chill with conversations on celebrating our differences and recognizing Autism Awareness Month. They will be ending the night with some movement and stretches that can be practiced in all of our day-to-day lives. And finally, on April 30th at 5:00 PM, once again, you can enjoy an evening concert from the comfort of your own home. Tailor-made tapestry, a tribute to Carol King and James Taylor, will be streaming live on YouTube and Facebook at Temecula Theater. That concludes my report this evening.
Eric, I, Temecula Community Services, family does an amazing job providing all kinds of classes and programs and services and events for residents, and I don't know how many are in that, in the catalog, but I know one time we had 1,100 different items in that catalog to choose from, so you could be busy every second of your life, if you wanted to.
Pretty much.
Yeah, so thank you Eric.
You got it.
Ron Gario, I'm angry with you, Planning Commissioner.
Why?
Because you're going to retire.
Don't you think it's about time?
No.
No? I think you're ready to get rid of me.
You're still making great decisions.
Thanks for that, I appreciate it. Madam Mayor, city council members, we did not have a meeting on April 7th, so nothing to report there. However, our next meeting in April and coming up in May, we have, as you can see, municipal code title 17 updates for 2022 through 2026, capital improvement program and general plan consistency review, quality of life master plan, and general plan updates, multiple summers spent home product review applications, Mountain View industrial development plans for new buildings in the industrial park, and finally, a facade improvement for the Del Taco and Iñez Road, which is north of Rancho California Road. And that concludes my report.
So there's some really fun stuff on there.
Oh, it's always fun. As fun as the other commission, but it's fun. We try to make it fun.
Well, and you do, I'm sure you do. So thank you, and we'll have more to say to you at the next council meeting.
Well, I hope some of it's good.
No, it's all going to be really good.
Thank you.
So thanks Ron. And last but not least, we have Ms. Tiffany Baker, Commissioner, on the Commission for Race, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. You guys have been busy, I hear.
Good evening, yes, yes, we have been, evening. Good evening to you, Mayor Edwards, and good evening, council members, how are you guys doing this evening? Well, I'm here to report. We met on the 8th, and we had some wonderful presentations from the Department of Community Development and Public Works, and from the Community Development Department, one of the items that stuck out the most was the Affordable Housing, of course, asking questions. And I love Luke, Luke was just on point with his answers, and he was really prepared. I really appreciated his presentation, and he was just so knowledgeable, he's really passionate. And also, we had some questions around the CDBG aspects of the department, and so that was really good. And then with the Public Works, we heard from Mr. Pat Thomas and Alvin, Alvin.
That's right.
Right? Did I say it right?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, good. I'm just, that's my greatest fear of messing up someone's name.
Oh, don't worry.
So, that was really good, and then we received an update on the Rady Initiative, which was, that's what we just come alive and so excited, and the commissioners have so much to share, and like we said, we are getting very busy, and we identified a list of stakeholders that we thought could participate and partner with us in our efforts, and I personally want to thank the city council for attending the diversity, equity, and inclusion training facilitated by the National League of Cities. You guys were very courageous, and I just want to say thank you. And I think having the training, of course, we have to be in line with the Brown Act, but others getting the opportunity to see, saw your efforts, and I, as a chair and as a resident, want to say thank you. And that concludes my report.
Well, thank you. I know you've been busy, because we, you know, we all get updates on everything you're doing, so we know what's coming our way, and we know it's very exciting, so, yeah, it's going to be a great year.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So thanks you guys.
Have a good evening. You're welcome.
Good evening to you too. Okay, we have a public safety report from California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, better known as CAL FIRE.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening Chief Crater.
Staff and citizens of Temecula, today's a big day, and I'll get to that in a little bit, but I want to give you the stats for calls for service for March 2021 in the city of Temecula. We ran 748 calls, 553 of those being medical-related, 58 traffic collisions, and 14 fires.
Wow.
And I thought I had some AV going.
There you go.
Here we go. Thank you. So you can see here what we ran in the city, per call type and what the total was, we're still a little bit above average from where we usually are, by about 50 to 51 calls for the month. Next slide, please. And then also, on the plan review and inspections for the March 2021 in our prevention side of the house, for plan reviews, we completed 446 new construction inspections, we did 334, and then for our annual inspections, which are mostly state mandated, we're on track to complete those on schedule, 590, and you can see the year-to-date totals on the right-hand column there.
And this was while City Hall was not open.
Yes, ma'am.
For the public to come in, and this is how much you have done, and that was all working with the public.
Yes, ma'am. We were able to adjust and go online as well, also split our staff where it was staggered out to be able to meet the needs of the city, and continue to, you know, get building inspections done, so people can start their projects and/or finish their projects.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, once they get back in their buildings, and slowly but surely, we're getting that way, so thank you Chief.
No problem. And then for the last slide, we're, yeah, we unveiled the new ladder truck today, all of you got to see that, we replaced our old truck, which served the city for 20 years. It was time, this truck was purchased with Measure S funding, we're very grateful to the community for passing that, and we continue to build on what we need to serve the community and stay on the cutting edge. And forefront of technology, this truck does bring more technology than the old one, you know, it boasts a camera on the end of the ladder, to where if we're going to a roof and we're going to perform ventilation, whoever's standing on the pedestal, the AO or the operator of the ladder can see what the conditions are of the roof, is it sagging, is the fire already through the roof, what kind of tools we need. We didn't have that before, so that's an added feature. The ladder is one foot longer than our old ladder, it's 101 feet instead of 100, which, you know, can make a difference. When you get to the end and you just need that little bit more, it's there, so as the city grows out, as far as it could go, it has to build up, so keeping a ladder truck in the city to where we can reach those eight-story future buildings that I'm sure we're going to see in the city, in the near future possibly, we need the equipment to be able to do that. This ladder truck is 57 feet long, it's three feet longer, which gives us a little more compartment space, and people think, oh, it's so long, how do you get it around? This ladder truck actually has a 25-foot radius, turning radius on it, so it's more maneuverable, especially for down in Old Town where the streets are a little bit narrower, you know, or multifamily dwellings, apartment complexes, we can get this ladder truck in there and be able to perform the duties that truck companies do. They're specially trained, and they're specially trained for a reason. They are the last ones you call when you have an emergency that needs the tools that it carries, so, such as extrication equipment, trench rescue equipment, confined space equipment, which is underground, all the communications needed for that to be able to perform those rescues, and it also has a USAR component, which is urban search and rescue for shoring buildings during earthquakes or vehicles that run into buildings, and we need to go stabilize that structure to be able to safely get in there and do a damage assessment. It also carries a swift water component as well for when we have the rainy season here in Temecula, and we have people in our creeks that do swell, it carries an inflatable raft and all the equipment we need to be able to perform those rescues, as well as high-angle, low-angle rescues utilizing ropes for over the side, or maybe people that are trapped on an overpass or a building to where there's no real other access to them. This truck carries all the equipment we need to be able to perform all the rescues that we could possibly come across in the city of Temecula, so we're very excited, it's beautiful, it's pretty, and you guys got a chance to take a look at that today.
And thank you for that chance.
No problem, and that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question.
Sue?
So, go back one slide, could you Chief? Okay, so the plan review and the construction inspections, is that unusually high? I mean, it seems like a lot.
We have been doing a lot. Believe it or not, I think Luke says it best, when we were shut down, you know, everybody was home and they wanted to add to their home, or add a pool, or add, you know, a room or something like that, businesses, even though they were closed, they were still adding on, or they needed inspection still to operate, especially when we went to outdoor dining and other things like that. Our department is involved in those things, along with Luke's shop as well. So, yeah, it's a lot, you know, our yearly totals were, we're up, we'll just say that.
Yeah.
That's what I said, Stu, and City Hall proper, for people to come in and bring applications and plans was not open, but they accomplished all of this online. And I think for some people, I think a lot of people liked it better online, it was more convenient for them, they didn't have to leave their house, you know, as so many things that occurred while we were online, so it is a lot. So thank you, and, go ahead.
And we go out and we meet with, you know, the general contractors and things like that off-site, so as far as the counter and public inquiries for people that come into City Hall, our staff would actually go out to the site, meet with them, review their plans here at the office, we go out, we meet with them, we check the site, and then we move forward, so.
Well, the numbers speak, so thank you and thank your team.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your support.
And thank you for letting us, you know, look and climb on and check out the ladder truck. I was privileged enough to be able to sit in the driver's seat, my feet missed hitting the pedals by at least 10 or 12 inches, but it is, it is not unlike the cockpit of an aircraft, and then the pièce de résistance, I got to stand on the deck and lower the ladder, which was fully extended, and then I got to lower the truck that was on the stanchions, it was, you know, completely raises that truck off the ground. It is remarkable, and my final comment on the truck is, you can drive down the freeway completely sideways, because there's a driver in the back, so you can go completely sideways.
You can. You could shut down three or four lanes. The reason we do that is for safety. When we have an accident, we're able to create some space for us to work, and it's a safety factor for us, but yes, you can drive sideways down the freeway.
So, just as we did the previous ladder truck, which is going to be going to a different Temecula fire station, we will get every penny's worth out of this one over the many years to come, so thank you. We're very proud of everything that our firefighters do. Okay, so, we are, we have public comments, we do have public comments this evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have several.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read this. "A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearings or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda." That's because we're in a virtual environment, so, thank you Madam City Clerk, you may proceed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and read these comments. There are some comments that have overlap with agenda item number 16, but there are some of those comments that are standalone, that aren't related to the agenda title either, so I'm going to go ahead and read all of them, they're all under three minutes at this time, and there are several that are duplicates, so I'll go ahead and read the one, and then individually state the names that have presented identical comments. Okay, the first comment is by Bob Cowell. "This is a general comment for this coming April 8th diversity meeting, as well as the upcoming Temecula City Council meeting to be read into the record. Critical race theory is a systemic racism based on a person's skin color. It teaches that all white people are racist for being white, this is racism. It perpetuates hate and causes division. If white American people were systemically racist, then why have so many people immigrated here from all over the world? Critical race theory divides, it does not unite. Critical race theory is not based on common sense. Critical race theory believes dialogue is evil. Without dialogue, we have a totalitarian system. Critical race theory is evil against the law and should be banned from schools, City Hall, and all public requirements within the city. People that teach it are just bad people. Critical race theory is so hateful that it causes white kids to feel that something is wrong with them for just being white. This causes depression and suicide. To the mysterious PJ who makes comments at these forums, why do you hide your name? You mentioned that I don't live in the city, so therefore I don't have a voice. I do have connections with the city, however, as I am the president of the Marietta Temecula Republican Assembly." The next speaker is Rick Reese, this one actually might be three minutes, so I'll go ahead and start. "In regards to the April 13th Temecula City Council meeting, a few items for your consideration. Item number one, protecting women and girls' sports. Recently, President Joe Biden issued an executive order reinterpreting the 1964 Civil Rights Act in a way that threatens to cancel women's sports by allowing genetic males to compete against genetic females. This radical social engineering is just the latest salvo put forth by extreme leftist ideologues seeking to tear down so many of our time-honored American institutions. While Biden and his ilk live to harp on Americans about the science when it suits their talking points, these zealots conveniently ignore the science of biology in which a genetic double X female will always be a female, just as a genetic XY male will always be a male. If in theory, a clone could be created from a so-called trans female, i.e. a genetic male, that clone would still have XY genetic material, and he would still be a male in every biological sense. Surgical mutilations and the taking of hormones do not change inherently different bone structures, muscle and tissue masses, heart and lung capacities, as well as fat compositions, all of which starkly differ between males and females." muscle and tissue masses, heart and lung capacities, as well as fat compositions, all of which starkly differ between males and females. This Frankenstein-like social experiment allowing genetic males to compete in girls' and women's sports will deprive many talented and otherwise competitive females from a variety of sports as they will be defeated by larger and stronger genetics, X Y male athletes posing as female competitors. Female athletes will also very likely be deprived of athletic scholarships, recognition, and even future professional sports opportunities. In the Declaration of Independence, our American founders cited a number of objective truths that were self-evident, including that we are created equal and that we are also endowed with certain unable rights. Yet another self-evident truth is that men are created with X Y chromosome and women are created with XX chromosomes. Or to make this even easier to understand, as the young boy so precisely said in the nineteen ninety movie, Kindergarten Cop, boys have a penis and girls have a vagina. A telling indicator about the nihilistic intent of this Biden policy is the obvious dearth of trans men, i.e. genetic females attempting to pose as males and compete in male sports. This is appearing more and more like a social engineering scam designed to award men in drag, medals, trophies, scholarships, and championships at the expense of young women with strong desires to compete and excel. Please consider adopting policies at the city level to protect our girls' sports leagues organized by the city and which routinely use, utilize our sports park and city recreational sites for sports and play. Note, this has been CC'd to the TV USD School Board as well in the hopes that our, uh, girls' extracurricular sports teams can be safeguarded too. Item number two, revoke zero bail in Riverside County. The recent stabbing death of an elderly Asian lady in Riverside by a deranged Monterey Park woman who was already out on zero bail for another previous tax should, attack should clearly illustrate the absolute need to reimpose bail onto dangerous and crime-prone arrests as quickly as possible. Madam Mayor, that's three minutes. The next comment is from PJ. Thank you, Mayor Edwards and City Council for an opportunity to quote-unquote speak tonight. First, I should address the letter by Rick Reese, which he wrote in response to my previous writings to the council. Of course, many of his ilk are prone to misinterpretation and facts due to their rabid delusions of patriot, patriotic glory and a steady diet of misinformation and lies. Simple fact, he is incapable of understanding the gravity of the situation and the depth of the consequences of electing an unqualified reality TV show personality fangirl to the council. And that's okay, but I did not attack her religion. I attacked her irresponsible votes while serving on the council caused by her intensely political partisan behavior influenced by her radical conservative right church and its leader. I did not attack her race. I stated that she was elected because she was white. With the help of Riverside County Sheriff's Association and the thousands of dollars they threw at her, she was able to darken the photos of her opponent in mailers and spew derogatory untrue things about her opponent. Jessica Alexander is unfit for council, careless about her city and constituents that she does about the hateful misguided rantings of her Facebook psychophants like Reese. For instance, she chose to skip the race equity and leadership reel training provided by the National League of Cities on April sixth. I certainly don't have the answer as to why Alexander did not attend this training, which was attended by all the other council members. It seems like a good thing for a new council member constantly squawking about wanting to understand her constituents to take part, to take time to partake in. Maybe she can answer why the reel training wasn't worth her time. And here she is tonight, once again pressing the open it all up agenda, Q agenda after complaining that she can't wear a mask due to mysterious health reasons. Why isn't she quote-unquote physical health excerpt and exercise council member? Jessica, stop attempting to risk other people's lives to spend your squealing pals who are sadly incapable of intelligent thought, compassionate behavior, and racial equality. There's nothing more pathetic than people who manufacture victimhood in order to push their political agendas. It's tragically sad and the sign of a weak mind and an unstable ideology. Jessica Alexander must resign before she foolishly spends more of the city's money and time. Do better. The next speaker is Joy Wilson. Good evening. Our family would like to show their support in allowing Jessica Alexander and Mr. Stewart to be present in person next to the city council at the dais for the meetings with their mask exemptions. You need to honor their wishes. Thank you. The next speaker is, is Geraldine Deary. Please honor the requirement for mask exemption of Jessica and Stu to be allowed in person for the Temecula City Council meetings without their masks. The next speaker is Adam Ricketts. Our family would like to show their support in allowing Mrs. Jessica Alexander and Mr. Stewart to be present in person next to the city council at the dais for the meetings with their mask exemptions. You need to honor their wishes. The next speaker is, uh, Danielle Selden. It has come to my attention that some wish to block two of our city council members from attending this in-person meeting. Please remember that they are representatives of the city's residents and were voted in. Many of us cannot, for legitimate medical reasons, wear a mask. My son, for example, has had severe asthma attacks and is also a mouth breather, which has already caused other issues. And his longtime pediatrician issued a medical exemption for him because it would be unsafe for him to wear one for long periods of time like school. And still he is harassed by the teachers for not always complying. By forcing all to mask up no matter what, we are causing untold damage to children who cannot advocate for themselves and are suddenly not welcome in society. I do not know the medical history of these two council members, but either way, their bare face presence helps those like my son. This has gone on long enough that let's no longer pretend that their bare faces are harming others. There is no evidence to support that theory and it is nothing more than a theory in political theater. In order to block someone from a meeting who was elected to be there to represent us, the city must prove beyond a reasonable doubt that their presence would be dangerous in some way, and there is no such evidence to support it. The next speaker is, this is in regards to you trying to keep Jessica Alexander and Stu Stewart from our city council meeting tonight. If they are part of our council, they have every right to be a part of the meeting. They have their constitutional rights to be there and you are blocking their civil rights. That was Tish B. The next speaker is Melinda Shaw. I'm writing to you in support of our city council members who do not wish to wear masks during the meetings. They should not be blocked from attending the meetings because they do not wear masks. We have elected them to represent us and they cannot fulfill their fiduciary responsibility to their fullest extent if they are not allowed to attend their meetings. I live in District Two and my representative, James Stewart, is one of the city council members that does not want to wear a mask. Regardless of my personal feelings on the mask issues, we should respect our fellow Americans' right to make these personal decisions for themselves and it should in no way impact their ability to teach, to do the job they were elected to do. The next speaker, um, there's not a name, um, just an email. Our connection. Talk about cultivating division within our, uh, within your own. Can we please stop this madness and accommodate everyone's beliefs in our community? We're tired of the people who are creating division and we will very easily vote those who create it out. The next speaker is Tanya Rubin. To refuse service to someone who is medically exempt from wearing a face mask as vitals, COVID policy clearly, as vitals, COVID policy clearly does represents a breach of the law and businesses who, uh, breach this law may be liable for a fine of up to fifty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand for the first offense with subsequent offenses increasing up to a hundred and fifty thousand. There is no law requiring masking and the guidelines allow for exemptions. Follow the guidelines and allow the exemptions or risk the liability of ADA, uh, penalties. The next speaker is Sharon Mayberry. Really, you are not allowing council members to attend a meeting without a mask. Shame on your ignorance. Do some real research on effectiveness. Start with size of virus and size of material of masks. I can't believe what the city is turning into. After living here since nineteen ninety-two, I am ready to move on when I see behavior like this. The next speaker is Jane Luhan. It is my understanding that council members Jessica Alexander and James Stewart are being asked to not attend the in-person council meeting this evening because they refuse to wear masks. If this is true, it is totally unacceptable as they are both duly elected officials and an integral part of this democratic process. To not allow them to participate in this meeting and be able to fulfill their duties is outrageous and defies all logic. Please reconsider this decision and allow them to fully participate in any fashion they choose. It's way past time to end this ridiculous mask mandate, which only continues to divide us. I thought we are living in the United States of America, which is a constitutional republic in which we are supposed to have freedoms guaranteed as by the United States Constitution. I fully support their decision to not wear masks if they so choose and to be able to conduct the business for the citizens of Temecula unhindered, and I hope others will also. The next set of comments, um, the first one is from Jessica Alexander and the others are exactly identical. So, I'll go ahead and read those names, but I'll read the contents of the first one first. As citizens, we demand the draconian measure of requiring the council members to wear masks against their will be withdrawn. The measure is unfounded and goes against logic, common sense, and many well-trusted doctors. In fact, according to America's frontline doctors, it is a testimony to the power of propaganda institutional capture and the desire to socially conform that masking of the general population has successfully been imposed during the COVID nineteen era. The harms from this imposition are palpable and potentially long-term and gargantuan, not the least of which is the psychological training of the public to comply with an absurd measure that has direct personal negative impact. They review the mounting evidence of the obvious. Universal masking harms people and society without any detectable benefit. You can read their scientific finding here. Um, the link is, um, AmericasFrontlineDoctors.com. I eagerly await your response as we are sure you understand your need to represent the countless constituents you have that want this nonsense to stop. You need to lead by example and the example you are setting is one that defies logic and science. Please change course. The, the identical comment was received by Tim Thompson from John Andrews from Kristen Tello from Brianna Owens from Richard Owens. This is an, another one from, it's signed from Brianna Owens from a different email address from Jennifer Chilton. Holly McKinley. And then, that comment, um, since I came down was also received from Al Crossland, Nikki Thompson, Jonathan Wiggle, Danica Walker, Nina Hardwick, and Carol Haley. In addition to that, I also received the next couple of comments. Uh, Sue Reichel. Uh, retire the masks if prudent social distancing is being observed. The requirement of mask seems to be a redundant and unnecessary measure forced upon our council members. Please rethink, rethink this requirement. The next speaker is Fabiola Vazquez. It is about time to open our city schools. There are more people dying from the side effects, sexual abuse, suicidal, and fear of this pandemic than the virus. It is time to open without the stupid masks since has, since it has not, since has not benefit to wearing it if you are healthy. People need to live without restrictions that have no logic or science behind. Please open up ASAP. And then, also, uh, the next comment is from Alyssa Nazar. I am sending this email as a concerned citizen of the Temecula Valley region. I am asking for the requirement of donning a face mask by council members to be withdrawn immediately. This measure is unconstitutional, proven ineffective, and quite honestly, is completely ignorant as it impacts our health negatively and does nothing to stop the spread of the virus. As a registered nurse, mother, wife, I do not accept this measure as it is infringing upon the health and freedom of our council members. It is not founded in scientific truth and is further perpetuating the myth that face masks save lives. Below, I have attached forty peer-reviewed research articles related to the hazards and ineffectiveness of wearing masks along with the science that supports why they're ineffective. I'm eagerly waiting your reply. Please listen to your countless constituents. We need our leadership to lead by a sensical example and not by one which ignores science and logical thinking. Make it make sense. The next speaker is, uh, Bob Cowell again. Um, his comments were under three minutes, so I'll add this sentence really quickly. Uh, I believe it is in the best interest of the public and the council members that the council members don't wear masks since they are a sufficient distance apart to maintain any perceived security issues from COVID. This is when the council reopens on May fourth. Um, and then, the last comment is from Christine Fontes. Follow the science, not agenda-oriented scientists. The fact is, the virus goes right through most masks. Let people breathe fresh air. There is no reason to mandate your city council to wear a mask while in session, especially when there is social distancing. It is just symbolism over substance. Let people make their own decisions on whether or not they want to wear one. Uh, Madam Mayor, that concludes the public comments.
All right, thank you. And we are going to be discussing this later, but I'd like to get something out of the way right now. And I can have Jessica and Stu answer this. Have we kept you from participating? No? Are we not allowing you to participate? No.
Madam Mayor, um, I, I think that since this is on the agenda tonight, you should reserve those comments for the agenda item.
I will, Peter. I just wanted to get this before anybody forgot. So, I will bring it up again later. Um, I don't know where this notion came from, but it's very unsettling. Um, so we will discuss this in a little bit. Okay, we have, uh, city council reports. So, let's see if anybody, anybody? Zach, you're grinning at me. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I believe I have a, a quick slide. This is just really, um, an open invitation to, uh, to our commissioners and, uh, city staff and, and really the community at large. You know, it's not a, not unknown that I do enjoy being out on a bike or walking or hiking and
You're driving with one hand?
Hey, I'm pretty talented. I can do that. Um, so this is a couple of commissioners from Community Services. Um, we took a tour on the south side of town and, and we just really explored the different trails and, and really just had a conversation about our city and, and, and not just related to, um, biking and hiking, but just in general. So, I wanted to use this opportunity as a, as a way to, um, ask or invite, uh, any other commissioners that are uh, interested, any other council members. Um, and quite honestly, um, as things, um, mellow down and we start to reopen a little fully again, uh, members of the public to come out, we'll do, uh, uh, like maybe a monthly ride or something like that. And we'll pick a section of the city and just be out on our bikes or walking and, and really just talk about infrastructure and, and, uh, community and things like that. So, it was really just an opportunity to publicly, uh, invite any of the other commissioners that, uh, would like to join me someday. So, thank you.
Good example, Zach. And all you seniors, you can join me and text me while we're watching Blue Bloods. How about that?
We'll get you a track, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And reach those pedals. Okay, who else? Jess, I know you have something.
Yes, I also have a slide, uh, Madam Mayor. Awesome. So, I was invited. It was really a great weekend. I was invited to go speak with, uh, these are some of the girls from the American Heritage, it's American Heritage Girls. And it was their twenty-fifth year right now currently, uh, last year was twenty-twenty. However, I got to be able to talk to them all about what we do here in the city, uh, what it's like to be a city council member, especially a new city council member, and just encouraging them to step out into their government and to be a voice. And it was really good to speak with these gals. I had so much fun. They come, they're all different and I absolutely had a blast. Been about an hour and a half. But the, uh, the American Heritage Girls builds was, uh, builds women's integrity through service to God, family, community, and country. They are premier national charter development here in Temecula and across the nation organizing for young women to embrace Christian values and encourage family involvement. So, I was honored to, uh, to have talked with them and spent time with them. So, I was really happy and I learned about a new charter here in Temecula. So, it was really great.
It's really fun to spend time around the young people today and I'm so impressed. Um, you know, with how, um, intelligent they are and how tuned in they are. It's, it actually makes you feel hopeful for the future. Okay, anybody else? Matt? No? Stu? Nothing? All right. Then, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Two, approve action minutes of March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. Three, approve list of demands. Four, approve city treasures report as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Five, adopt resolution reaffirming and proclaiming the existence of a local emergency related to COVID nineteen virus pandemic. Six, approve renaming Roar Paw Ranch Community Sports Park to the Sports Ranch at Summers Bend at the request of Councilmember Zach Schwain. Seven, approve an agreement for consultant services with Bureau Veritas Technical Assessments. Eight, approve purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of eight hundred forty square foot permanent easement on two seven five one one Commerce Center Drive, Temecula, APN nine two one dash four eight zero dash zero three two in connection with Overland Drive Extension Project, PW one six S dash zero six. Nine, approve the plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Restroom Expansion and Renovation Project, PW eighteen zero three. And that's been a long time coming. Thank you. And number ten, approve parcel map three seven six one five located on the west side of Cantrell Road north of Calle Chapos. Caye Chapos. 11, accept improvement and file the notice of completion for the mini pump track Yay at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, PW2009. Okay, so anything? No pulling?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull number nine, please.
Number nine?
Nine, just get a little bit more understanding of what the what we're, I guess, the finances are going towards.
The the sports park restroom?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Did I see somebody else's hand? No? Okay, and I would just like to make a comment about number six. Oh, no, not number six. Number five, adopt the resolution reaffirming and proclaiming the existence of a local emergency related to COVID-19 virus pandemic. And that is done because we receive, in case we receive COVID funds from the state government, we have to extend the and adhere to the local emergency. So that's number five. And so I need a motion now. But let's take a motion on all of them except number nine. So and then we'll come back to number nine. So you can move the balance if you want with number nine excluded, somebody.
So moved.
Motion in a second, and could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alexander?
Naon five, yes on everything else and a poll on nine.
We're going to vote on five, so that's okay.
Mayor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Hi.
Councilmember Stewart?
Hi.
Councilmember Schwank?
Councilmember Schwank?
Okay, so and that includes number five, so we're good. And we have four eyes and one no on five, so that would be consent. So, okay, now let's go back to item number nine. Is there somebody that can give us a little staff report on this one? Pat?
Mayor Edwards, good evening, Mayor Edwards and council members. This item on your agenda is a request for you to approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for replacement of the main restroom and concession building at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This is the building that's located at the main baseball complex there at the park. The project involves demolition of the existing building and replacement of that building with a prefabricated new restroom and concession and storage building that that is under construction that has been pre-ordered by the city. What is before you is to approve the solicitation of bids for the installation of this building, the demolition of the existing building, also includes demolition of all of the concrete sidewalks and slab of the existing building and a portion of the parking lot, bringing that all up to ADA standards. So we have to reconstruct part of the parking lot and the pad and the sidewalks around the building. The new restroom building will include eight individual stalls, restroom stalls, so it's more of a family family-style restroom building, as well as a larger concession area and a storage building for storing of our maintenance equipment there at the park. So again, this is for you to approve authorizing the or approving the plans for just the demolition and the installation of the new building and authorize solicitation of bids for that portion of the project. We anticipate that upon your approval, we would be able to put this project out to bid here in the near future. Then, once the bids are received, award a contract, and we're looking to start this project sometime this summer, and we expect to have this prefabricated building and installed in the latter part of this summer. So that concludes staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Jess, you got questions?
I was just curious. I wanted to just have a little bit more understanding so the public can know as well as to, you know, where the funding is going as well, and so they can get an understanding. Just with the time that if we're in this state of emergency, is it our best place to spend those funds and under that right now or to hold it? That's kind of what I'm looking at, so.
That's been, that's in the capital improvement.
I know, I know.
Right? Yeah, so.
Just just wanting to take a look that, you know, if if we need fire or anything else under those Measure S funds, if that's kind of a better area to move it or just hold it while we're in the state of emergency, so.
Okay, I do have a, I do have a question, Pat. So will we have to, I mean, the fields won't be shut down while that is being done?
No, no, that will be able to continue the operation of the fields. We will have to cordon off the area around the existing building because it will be demolished or torn down, as well as replacing the the concrete and a portion of the parking lot. But we won't need to shut down the fields in order to do that.
Okay, Kevin, did you have your hand up? I caught it. I caught it.
Good eye. You mentioned that this has been a long time coming, and you know, this item, it kind of came out of discussions between TCSD and Public Works Park Maintenance Staff, as well as the local youth leagues, wanting additional concession areas and restrooms. And, you know, this project predates my my time here, but, you know, for the past few years, you know, pre-COVID, we've had to close down the that restroom for our Fourth of July park events. And in short, our sports staff is ecstatic that that this project is moving forward. And I know our recognized youth leagues are too. And that also includes, you know, Temecula Valley Soccer Association, our baseball, little leagues and things like that. So we've been waiting for this huge impact, not just for sports, but for events there too. So please, we respectfully ask for your concurrence and approval.
I would say this is satisfying because it was the only place you could go and find a line outside the men's room, as well as the women's restroom. So but those days are going to be over now, but thank you. It really is desperately needed. So that's good for number nine, so.
I got a question.
Oh, who did? Who who said that?
That's me.
Oh, Stu, go ahead, because I saw Zach's hand.
So how many, how many bathrooms are currently there?
Well, we have a men's and women's restroom individually, and I believe they have, I'm not certain of this number, but I believe they have two stalls in each of those. So this is actually.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's accurate. We're looking forward to the to the single stall unit sex in order to actually accommodate the restroom needs.
Okay.
Because we know that that was taking place anyway. I mean, if there was a line in the women's restroom and nobody in the men's restroom, dare I say that women were using the men's restroom out of desperation. So Zach, did you have your hand up?
I just would like to move the item and and just acknowledge that there's probably nothing more family-friendly than a nice clean restroom, so.
Yes, yes. So thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, and can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Hi.
Mayor Edwards?
Hi.
Councilmember Ron?
Hi.
Councilmember Stewart?
Hi.
Councilmember Schwank?
Hi.
All right, having completed the first order of business, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of Temecula Community Services District Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority, which I like to call the T-P-F-A. And throw it to Zach for community services.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, may you please call the rolls since we remain in this virtual setting?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Hi, here.
And actually, that's Director Alexander. Director Edwards?
Hi.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwank?
Here.
And Director Stewart.
You don't get extra money for that, though, Jess, for being a director now than a, yeah. Sorry, Zach, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Seeing everyone's here, do you have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 12, approve action minutes of March 23, 2021. And item number 13, approve an amendment to the agreement between Temecula Community Services District and Social Work Action Group at the request of Human Services Subcommittee, Mayor Edwards, and Councilmember Alexander. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Director Alexander?
Hi.
Director Edwards?
Hi.
Director Ron?
Hi.
Director Stewart?
Hi.
President Schwank?
Hi. Thank you very much. That I, the consent calendar passes 5-0. Director Hawkins, do we have a director's report this evening?
Well, nothing to add to Chair Levine's report, but again, just thanks, our thanks for the approval of the restrooms. It really, so thank you. That concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to take the liberty here to sort of acknowledge a few things. And and I know Chair Levine wasn't stepping on his toes and clearly not on yours, but also just acknowledge that the city as a whole is, you know, across departments is working. So if I give a little kudos to TCSD, that is as TCSD president, and certainly recognize that the rest of the departments are equally as valuable. But I thought I'd like to share this. Over Easter, there was an event called Get Egg, totally outside of the box. Our traditional Easter egg hunts, if you will, were, you know, at our large sports parks and are extremely well-attended. So for those to go away this year, last year was difficult to for a lot of folks to deal with. I'm going to read you just a couple quotes, just wanted everyone to hear these before we move on. A couple of them say, "We are so grateful for how amazing Temecula has been during this difficult time. Thank you all for all that you do. I just wanted to say thank you. Our bags of filled eggs and goodies were left by our front door today. I truly appreciate our community doing this." And the last one was, "I just wanted to let you know, we appreciate your hard work and recognize that we're lucky to live in a place that goes above and beyond for us. Thank you for giving us this memory." As I read those when they came in, I just thought I needed to share that with the with the general public. So Director Hawkins, your staff, and the city at large, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Absolutely. General Manager's report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one brief, with the passage of Agenda Item 13, I just wanted to remind the council that we are continually having conversations with the city of Marietta, who's also under contract with SWAG for homeless outreach services. And so I foresee that being sort of very advantageous for us down the road. And Kevin and I have talked about this often, and so there may be an opportunity down the road to sort of leverage this contract for even greater good and savings down the road and in terms of us both being under contract with the same nonprofits. So we'll continue to work closely with our neighbor to the north and hopefully helping those in need where need be on the homeless front. So with that, it concludes my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Any of our directors have any reports this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to adjournment. The next meeting of the Temecula Community Services District will be held on Tuesday, April 27 at 5:30. We are adjourned.
All right, so I'm moving on to the reconvene to make the city council meeting and moving on to the Temecula Public Financing Authority or the T-P-F-A, and I'm going to call that to order. And could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Director Alexander? Director Alexander? I, I.
Here.
Sorry. Chair Edwards?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwank?
I'm here.
Director Stewart?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, thank you. So do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, then moving on, we have a public hearing right now. And it's for Temecula Public Financing Authority related to the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District number 20-01 Heirloom Farms. So city staff summarizes, you're going to have the staff report for us right now.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Assistant City Manager Greg Butler is ready to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Right, let me share my screen. Tell me if you can see. Can you see the slides? Yes.
Point of order, ma'am. Do I need to open the hearing first since we have no, we don't really until we're ready?
No, Madam Mayor, and actually, Mr. Butler's presentation is going to cue us at the different actions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, the Temecula Public Financing Authority, or as the mayor likes to call it, the T-P-F-A, will finalize the formation of the Heirloom Farms CFD. As I noted at the February 3, February 23 meeting, the Heirloom Farms development was approved by the Planning Commission earlier this year. This roughly 28-acre site outlined in red on your screen is located at the southwest corner of Date and Inez Streets. To get you oriented, Harvestin is towards the upper right, where my arrow is kind of circling here. And to the north, this is the Mercedes dealer. As I noted last time, this is a dated aerial. The Audi dealership actually occupies this space right here. The proposed CFD boundary, or Community Facilities District boundary, encompasses only the property that's involved in the Heirloom Farms. The boundary map was approved at the last council meeting and recorded shortly thereafter. As a reminder, the Heirloom Farms is a 321-unit, single-family residential development comprised of a mix of detached homes and two- and three-story townhomes, along with supporting amenities, rec center, pool, et cetera. Tonight's actions are a continuation of the CSD formation, CFD formation process initiated on the 23rd of February. This evening, the authority will finalize the formation process by conducting a public hearing, adopting resolutions, forming the district, authorizing the issuance of bonds and a related special tax levy, as well as conduct the special election process. Assuming the election goes as anticipated, the authority will formally declare the election results and direct the recording of a special tax lien. And finally, the ordinance levying the special taxes will be read for the first time. The ordinance will take effect after the second reading, which will take place at the next city council meeting. As a reminder, CFDs are a common funding mechanism used to finance public infrastructure and services. Most people are familiar with the term mellow roof fees. A CFD is a land-secured financing where special taxes are levied on real property within the district. Those taxes are used to pay debt service on bonds, which are typically tax-exempt, that fund public infrastructure, roads, parks, et cetera. In many instances, a separate special tax is levied to cover the cost of added municipal services. And it's important to note, we make this point every time when we talk about CFDs, the special taxes are not city-imposed taxes. The landowners within the district vote to impose, to self-impose the special taxes. We will be conducting that election for this CFD as part of tonight's actions. The formation process informally started last year when the authority and the city approved a development reimbursement agreement with Meritage to cover the costs associated with the formation. These costs will be reimbursed once the CFD is formed and bonds are issued. The city entered agreements with our financing team noted here on the screen. And as with anything else, the development experienced minor delays due to the onset of the pandemic. Once things stabilized, development processing resumed. The city's economic consultant, Kaiser Marsden and Associates finalized the fiscal impact analysis, and the developer and city team fine-tuned the list of facilities to be financed and estimated their costs. For this CFD, the public facilities listed here on the screen will be financed. I'm not going to rattle through all those. We went through them last time. And the municipal services provided to the new development will be that the list, the municipal services provided to the new development will be funded through the CFD in perpetuity. As I noted at the onset, the authority initiated this formation process on February 23 with the adoption of two resolutions of intention and setting the public hearing for this evening. At that same time, the city council approved the JCFA between the city and the authority, formalizing that the city will own and maintain authority-funded improvements and provide municipal services. So that gets us caught up to this evening. Madam Mayor, before we step through the formation process, I wanted to acknowledge that we have representatives from the developers team joining us this evening. We have Ephraim Joelsson from Meritage Homes and Jim Zimmerman from the Zimmerman Group, their financial advisor. We also have members of this city's financial We also have members of this city's financial consulting team with us this evening, including Jim Fabian, our municipal advisor from Fieldman Rollup, Heidi Ship from our special tax consultant from Webb Municipal Finance, and Paul Timig, bond counsel from Quint and Tigamick. Madam Mayor, as the chairperson of the Temecula Public Financing Authority, I believe bond counsel has provided you with the script, and this is your cue to initiate those proceedings.
All right. So. So this is the time for the public hearing in this Board of Directors proceedings for the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 2001 Heirloom Farms. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of the district, the levy of special taxes on property in the district, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness for the district. This meeting and public hearing are being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order Number N 2920 dated March 17th, 2020, regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with the order, the public may not, may not view the meeting in person in the council chamber. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on television and/or online as described on the agenda and the notice of public hearing. All protests and comments not already received will need to be made by email to the city clerk as described in the notice of public hearing and the meeting agenda. The city clerk shall read all email comments, provided that the reading shall not exceed five minutes or such other time as the council may provide consistent with the time limit for speakers at an in-person council meeting. The email comments shall become part of the meeting record. So before I formally open the hearing, Ms. City Clerk, have you received any written or email protests from any owners of the property in the district or registered voters who reside in the district who wish to protest against the formation of the district, the special tax levy, or the proposed bond issue for the district?
Madam Chair, I have not received any written protest for the creation of this particular district.
Okay. Then in, with that knowledge, I am going to officially open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, any comments on this matter? No?
No, Chair. I have not received any public comments on this item either.
Okay. So since the clerk has not received any public comments, City Clerk, would you please, so you did not receive any comments, so we're going to skip it. Each comment will be read in full, so we conduct that just like we would any other, but we don't have any comments. So then we'll go ahead and we can close the public hearing, knowing that there are no comments pending. And now the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority then considers the adoption. So we can go ahead and read all of these again so that I can refresh your memory, and then we can have questions of Greg if you want to. So first, we have a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority, a formation of Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 20-01 Heirloom Farms, authorizing a levy of a special tax within the district and preliminary establishing an appropriations limit for the district. The next one is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness of the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 20-01 Heirloom Farms, and submitting proposition to the qualified electors of the district. And the next one is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority calling special election within Community Facilities District Number 20-01 Heirloom Farms. Okay. So.
So at this time, Madam Mayor, we'll go ahead and take a motion to go ahead and approve those three resolutions that you just read.
All right. And we're going to collect, we're going to take.
Madam Mayor, I believe Councilmember Stewart has a question.
Stu?
Yeah. Is, I thought we were going to open it up for discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I've always had an issue with these because as Greg said, you know, it has to be voted on by the residents. And yet there's no residents in this community right now. So how can it be voted on by the residents?
It's voted on, it's a vote of the property owners in the district. So currently, there's one property owner. It's the developer.
Okay.
And so that property owner is the only one that's entitled to a vote right now.
And Stu, the residents vote when they agree to purchase the homes. They vote by purchasing the homes, knowing that those taxes are in place to cover the cost of the infrastructure of that development where they live. So I always considered that to be their, their vote. They have, they can buy the home or they cannot buy the home.
Right. But at the same token, we're, we're running this meeting based on the fact that no resident can bring this up in a future action that isn't brought up in this meeting. And hence, there is no residence. So, you know, and that, that's, that's always been my rub with these, these mellow roofs is it's allowing the developer to basically strong arm a resident into purchasing, not purchasing, they, they're free to purchase the home. But, but they're, they're basically paying for the development costs of the developer. And that's, that's always been a strange thing to me. I'm from a different state originally, and in that state, a developer paid for all the infrastructure and all the things necessary to make that development happen. So, so for me, this has always been a, a kind of like a rub because everything we're voting on and everything we're saying is, is for one person, the developer. And, and that, I have an issue with that. That's all I'm saying.
Like, again, I think they cast their vote by choosing to buy a home there with the taxes in place, or there are other places, you know, many other places in town. Not every place has the, the mellow roof fees. And the other thing is this, you know, we, we compel, actually, I don't want to use the word force, but we strongly compel, we won't approve development plans until the infrastructure is in first. Because we don't want Temecula residents to be burdened with the cost of paying for infrastructure for new people coming to town. Why should the residents pay for the new people coming to town? So the new people have to pay their way. And that's what these taxes are used for. They're really a financing mechanism that helped the developer borrow enough money to pay for his development. So, you know, it's a, it's a security. And then you choose to approve those taxes by buying a home there or by not buying a home there. So there's really, I don't want to make Temecula residents responsible for paying for the infrastructure of new people that are moving into town. Those people need to pay their own way. And that's how, this is how the structure that they pay their own way. So.
Bond counsel Paul Timig may have some comments to help address Stu's concern.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg.
Oh, good evening, council members. This is Paul Timic from Quint and Tigamick, your bond counsel. The mayor makes excellent points and is right on target. There is one other thing to consider that is the theory behind the mellow roof's financing vehicle is that we will borrow tax exempt to finance these infrastructure improvements. If the developer borrowed, he'd have to reflect that in the price of the housing. So theoretically, the mellow roof keeps the price of housing more affordable. That's just one other thing to consider.
And that's, that's at one level though, because when you're talking in perpetuity, you're not, you're not, you're basically saddling the, the new resident with a tax base that at some point, especially if the prices of homes go, of course, it doesn't go up by percentage, but so, I don't know. I, I, like I said, it's been more of a mental issue for me dealing with developers being able to saddle, you know, the homeowners in perpetuity for infrastructure that is basically a developer cost. And I agree, it, it, it would raise the home price, but to not have that mellow roof on that property for in perpetuity, I think for the homeowner, it would be actually more advantageous to pay more than to have that tax base much higher. So.
Stu, just a little bit of clarity, and I see Paul raised his hand again, and he can correct any of my statements. The perpetual part of these special taxes, the perpetuity component is only for the municipal services that are provided to these residents that are over and above what we would normally have supplied to this development. Recall, this was the subject of an amendment to the general plan and the specific plan to allow residential units on this property. So that is why we did the fiscal impact analysis and determined that there was an added cost to providing municipal services to these residents that was not already accounted for. And so that's what will be assessed in perpetuity. The bonds that are issued to fund the improvements actually typically have a 30-year lifespan on them. And so that component of the special tax would go away or dissipate as the bonds get redeemed and fulfilled. The rate and method of apportionment determines the split between how much taxes go to bond proceeds and how much tax, or excuse me, bond debt service and how much taxes go to municipal services. Paul, I see your hand is still up. Anything else to add?
Oh, no, that was an excellent summary. Boy, you've learned this stuff over the years. And yes, the infrastructure tax does have a shorter lifespan.
Are we good, Stu?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Then Peter, do you need to read it once again?
This is just a motion of these three resolutions, Madam Mayor.
You don't need to read anything again.
Not at this stage.
Okay. So then I need a motion on this item.
Move to item 14. Second.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Could we have roll call, please? Yes. Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
And Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Okay. So.
All right. So that's the first component of item number 14. The last resolution that you approved here called for the special election. And so now, I believe, Madam Mayor, you have a couple more cues in your script.
I do. The results of the election being in favor of the levy of the special.
Actually, if we can, Madam Mayor, if we can go back up to step number six, please.
Oh, all the way up? Okay. You didn't code the code this, the same way, Randy. No, she didn't really. Okay. So then, at this time, I ask the city clerk as secretary of the Temecula Public Financing Authority to open the ballot submitted by the owner, oh yes, we have to unveil it, of the property in the Community Facilities District and announce the results of the election.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, I have one ballot that was returned as there's only one property owner. And that property owner voted all 28 votes in favor of the measure.
Okay. So. Okay. So now we're ready to go on to the next announcement. So we have the results. The results of the election being in favor of the levy of special taxes for the district and the establishment of the appropriations limit and the incurring of bonded indebtedness. We may now proceed with the final actions for the Community Facilities District. The Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority then considers the following. Adoption of a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority declaring results of special election and directing recording of notice of special tax lien, Community Facilities District Number 20-01 Heirloom Farms. First reading of an ordinance of the public, Temecula Public Financing Authority levying special taxes within Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 20-01 Heirloom Farms. Okay.
And we'll go ahead and ask for a motion for both of those items at this time.
So we can have a motion to approve?
And just point of clarification for the city attorney, does the mayor's reading of that ordinance title suffice?
Yes, she read the title of the ordinance as it's contained in the staff report, and that's, that meets the requirements of the Brown Act.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we can have a motion.
With approval?
Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. And could we have the roll call, please? Yes. Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right. So the item passes. And turn the page and turn the page and turn the page. So that was the last item. Right? Yes. Okay. Then we are ready for anything that, TPAFA executive director?
Nothing further tonight.
Okay. And members, board members, anything? No? No more discussion? All right. Then I will call adjournment to the meeting and we'll meet next regular meeting of the Temecula Public Financing Authority on April 27th at 5:30 PM for closed session with regular session commencing at 7:00 PM. Okay. Now I'm going to reconvene in the Temecula City Council meeting and go into a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk prior to the public hearing. And it's item number 15, approved proposed ordinance to update the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, or MSHCP, and local development mitigation fee resolution, long-range project number LR21-0392. And I believe Mr. Watson has the staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Go ahead and share my screen real quick. Can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
I see the fountain.
Very good. Very good. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm here tonight to bring before you the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, otherwise known as MSHCP Fee Update. To begin with some background, the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, originally adopted in 2004, MSHCP is a comprehensive plan focused on permanent conservation of 500,000 acres of protect, and protection of 146,000 species in Western Riverside County. The conservation goals of the MSHCP program are accomplished through the acquisition of conservation land, either through the, through land dedications or acquisitions with fees collected from individual projects. The MSHCP was developed in response to the need for future growth opportunities in Western Riverside County while addressing the requirements of the State and Federal Endangered Species Act. The MSHCP serves as an HCP pursuant to Section 10A1B of the Federal Endangered Species Act of 1973, as well as Natural Communities Conservation Plan under the NCCP Act of 2001. MSHCP streamlines these environmental permitting processes by allowing the participating jurisdictions to authorize a take of plant and wildlife species identified within the plan area. At the same time, the plan implementation provides a coordinated MSHCP conservation area and implementation program to preserve biological diversity. Some of the benefits of the plan are the ability for public and private, so it's both, you know, city projects as well as private development projects, to have an established procedure to expedite project review and gain compliance under the Endangered Species Act. Additionally, participation, participation in the plan allows the city to be eligible to receive Measure A transportation funds, which total more than $3 million annually. So moving on to the, the fee update itself, you know, why the need to date the fee? Well, the MSHCP fee has not been increased, other than consumer price index, consumer price index increases since inception in 2004. So several of the assumptions in the original 2004 nexus study did not occur, causing a revenue gap in their projections that would only get wider by further delaying the implementation of an updated fee. And the RCA must demonstrate full funding of the MSHCP to the state and federal wildlife agencies, who are the actual agencies that provide permits to the permittees, which the city is, under the plan. So without these permits, the MSHCP cannot provide coverage for the private development and public, you know, city infrastructure projects under the, both the federal and state Endangered Species Act. And without that coverage, each project will be responsible for mitigating their own impacts pursuant to these laws. both the federal and state Endangered Species Act, and without that coverage, each project will be responsible for mitigating their own impacts pursuant to these laws. So this matrix is demonstrating the fee as it sits currently today and then what the new fee will be. You can see here the category. The, the first three categories are residential, up to eight dwelling units an acre, eight to fourteen dwellings the acre, and projects that are fourteen plus dwelling use the acre, and the final two categories are commercial and industrial. This is the current fee, this column here, you can see as you go down through the different categories. The, the R C A board adopted a phase in of the new fee increase. So fifty percent of the increase will take, take effect on July first, two thousand and twenty-one, and that's the column highlighted here, with the remaining fifty percent taking effect on January first, two thousand and twenty-two. The R C A Executive Committee considered the nexus study in six public meetings over the course of a year, November nineteen through November twenty. The R C A board, consisting of elected officials representing eighteen cities and the county board of supervisors, adopted the nexus study just this past December, on December seventh. Couple things, the cities and counties may accept prepayment of the fees at their own discretion, and we may have a number of projects that take advantage of that prior to the fee ta, increase taking place on July first. And staff is proposing a small administrative processing, processing fee of fifteen dollars and forty-five cents per project to compensate the city for administering the fee collection. So it's minimal. Cities and counties must adopt the, the updated M S H C P prior to July one, twenty twenty-one, to remain compliant with the M S H C P and be eligible to receive the plan's benefits. So with that, staff is recommending to introduce and read by title an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city council, the city Temecula, amending chapter fifteen point one zero, multiple species habitat conservation mitigation fee of the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Rivers, Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. And to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the city of Temecula establishing the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan Local Development Mitigation Fee pursuant to chapter one fifteen point one zero of the Temecula Municipal Code. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions, as well as we have staff here from R C A as well as R T, R C T C, if you have any further questions for us.
Okay, council members, anything? Nothing? These fees make it possible for the R C A to do its mandated job, and that is to purchase parcels of land that have been designated as the necess, the habitats it's needed to balance the M S H C P in Riverside County. And you, you guys all know that includes plants, animals, amphibians, and insects. It's, it's really everything. And it's not really the choice of the county to decide what's endangered. It is a federal law. And in order for the county to continue to receive federal funds and, and in that, in line with that, for the city to continue to receive those funds from R C A, we have to belong. And so our cities in Riverside County, Southwest Riverside County at least, belong to R C A and benefit from those fees. And what it does is it replaces the land that is taken for development with land that has or contains that particular type of habitat, animal, insect, bug, reptile, or plant. And that way we're in balance, so. And R C A has, has, R C A is basically the collection agency and the purchaser of property. And then eventually R C A becomes the ma, main, maintenance agency to maintain those properties, huge, huge, open protected reserves of, of land. So, and I served on the R C A board and loved it for about, I don't know, twelve, thirteen years, and it's been great interesting to see the M S H C P grow. So if you don't have any questions, how about comments?
Well, I think you handle it very well, that it's a mandated thing, and just like anything, if you don't prepare a, a slow and steady increase, at one point, the shoe drops, and I think that's where we're at right now. The shoe dropped and everybody's got to just deal with it, unfortunately. I mean, we don't have a choice.
And we paid full market value, appraisal value, R C A does of those properties, and you know, property values have skyrocketed in the last year or so, so, and R C A continues to purchase those properties, and they have to. And I'll say that I'm very proud of Riverside County because we are eons ahead of other counties across the nation, and in fact, R C A is used in this as an example, in Washington and Sacramento, the Department of Fish and Game, and they've just done an outstanding job. So if there are no questions and no other comments.
Actually, Madam Mayor, this is a public.
And then, and do we have any comments?
If you want to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I will share with you, Madam Mayor, that we have no public comments for this particular item. If you would like to close the public hearing.
All right.
And if Mr. City Attorney would like to read the ordinance title, then we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending chapter fifteen point ten, multiple species habitat conservation mitigation fee of the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan.
All right, thank you, Peter. So I will accept a motion.
I'm moved.
And that motion would include both the introduction of the ordinance and the resolution.
Yes. So I'll move in a second. All right, so could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwenk.
Aye.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, R C A and R C T C for being here to answer the questions that we have. So doing a great job, and I'm very proud of you and just very happy to be working with you. Okay, so now onto business item. Number sixteen. Adopt resolution formalizing previous direction regarding the conduct of in-person public meetings and provide additional direction as needed. Okay, so Randy Joel, you're giving the staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am, and our fabulous I T, I T team back there is running the presentation that we can go ahead and see on the screen. So thank you, fellas back there. Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the community. At the meeting of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, Councilmember Alexander requested that an item be placed on the agenda regarding the opening of city council meetings for in-person attendance by the city council and the public. At the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the city council collectively provided direction regarding in-person meeting protocols. The item before you tonight is to formalize that direction into the proposed resolution for adoption, establishing new meeting protocols for the conduct of in-person public meetings during the state declared emergency. Next slide, please, thank you. As a friendly reminder, just, I'm sorry, the, the previous slide, please. Thank you. Oh, oh. The next slide, please. Thank you. And actually, I apologize, fellas, the slide before. There we go, hold it. Thank you. As a friendly reminder, with respect to how we currently conduct our city council meetings, they are currently conducted in this space that you can see on the screen now, virtually utilizing Zoom technology. The technology currently operates on nearly an all-or-nothing platform. And what we mean by that is that virtual meetings have one onsite presence in the chambers, Madam Mayor, that is us, and the balance is actually participating virtually. And for in-person meetings, if we were to, to do that with current technology, all participants would need to be onsite and council chambers with only one participant virtual. Currently, public comments are received via email and read into the record consistent with executive order and twenty-nine twenties. Next slide, please. At the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the city council considered five separate questions and collectively gave direction on those questions. Next slide, please. As to the first question, question number one, when would the city council like to begin conducting in-person meetings again? The council at the March twenty-third meeting collectively stated that this for discussion purposes would be the first regularly scheduled city council meeting in May, two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide. For question number two, when conducting in-person meetings again, would the council prefer a partial opening with only council and staff or a full opening with the public in chambers? And if the partial opening, when would the council prefer the full opening? The council gave collective direction at the March twenty-third meeting to go ahead and pursue a full opening with both the city council and the members of the public in attendance with the appropriate public health measures in place. Next slide. For question number three, when conducting in-person meetings again, which health and safety protocols would the council like to have in place? And what enforcement mechanism would the council like in place for these health and safety protocols? The direction given at the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting collectively was that public health measures for in-person meeting attendance by city council and members of the public could include social distancing, mask wearing, sanitation stations, cleaning and disinfecting equipment, temperature checks, and signage communicating public health measures at entrances. Next slide, please. Question number four, when conducting in-person meetings again, how would the council like to receive and record public comments? The direction given collectively at the March twenty-third meeting was that public comments may be received in person with public health measures in place and via electronic mail and read into the record consistent with what our current practice is currently. Next slide, please. For question number five, when would the council like the boards and commissions to conduct in-person meetings again? The collective direction given at March twenty-third meeting was that the boarding commission meetings will commence in the same manner as the city council meetings with the same public health measures and protocols in place consistent with current practice of council meetings and boarding commission meetings. Next slide, please. In addition, council gave us a few items of research. The first had to do with hybrid use of technology. And the I T department did a considerable amount of research since the March twenty-third meeting, including connecting with their consultant and were able to identify the following items. And a hybrid solution is available. Through that, council members and staff would be able to attend in person or through Zoom. Through this hybrid model, we would go ahead and bridge chamber audio visual to Zoom video conferencing. The video equipment in the chamber would be used for the podium, wide shots, and the audience. Participants, council members, staff, will go ahead and use individual web cameras and be visible on the screen. An audio bridge will help eliminate feedback looping and remove nearly all delays. The public will continue to view the meetings via channel three, online stream, or through Zoom. And these upgrades may be completed by May and may be adopted within budget. Next slide, please. The next additional item of research that council stated was the use of partitions at public meetings. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, Nicole Flores, our risk manager, actually had a consultation with Cal OSHA. And Cal OSHA indicated that face coverings are required with partitions irrespective of the distance apart as the partitions do not provide the same protection as face coverings do. So with respect to partitions, that needed to, that did not eliminate the need for face coverings pursuant to Cal OSHA consultation. The final additional item of research was face covering standards. So with respect to this, it's really important to remember that there are three separate tracks here. There's the track of the governor's executive orders. There's the track of the California Department of Public Health, which will refer to as C D P H. And then there is the track of California Division of Occupational Safety and Health. That's what we're referring to as Cal OSHA. Under Cal OSHA, the city of Temecula is legally an employer. Council members and staff are employees. Under Cal OSHA Code of Regulations, employers, AKA the city of Temecula, must provide face coverings and ensure face coverings are worn by employees over the nose and mouth indoors, when outdoors and less than six feet away from another, one another, and when required by C D P H or other local health department. That is in the Code of Regulations. Next slide, please. Cal OSHA describes a face covering as tightly woven fabric or non-woven material with no visible holes or openings, which covers the nose and mouth. Again, in the Code of Regulations. They just, they specifically call out in the Code of Regulations that face shields are not a replacement for face coverings, but may be worn together for additional protection. Now, it's important to note that Cal OSHA, under Code of Regulations, does provide for limited exceptions. Those limited exceptions are five specifically. The first one is when the employee is alone in a room. The second one is when we are eating or drinking at the workplace, provided employees are six feet apart and outside air supply to the area, if indoors, is maximized. The next one is employees wearing respiratory protection per, per section five one four four or other Title Eight safety orders. The fourth one, which we'll talk about in a minute, is if employees cannot wear face coverings due to a medical or mental health condition or disability or who are hearing impaired or community, or communicating with hearing impaired persons. And the last one is during a limited time period in which a specific task can actually not be feasibly formed with a face covering. An unmasked employee is at least six feet away from others, and unless unmasked employees is tested twice weekly for COVID nineteen. Now, next slide, please. With respect to that number four, medical exemption, it is important to note that the medical exemption does trigger an ADA accommodation iterative process. Under the ADA iterative accommodation process, the California Department of Public Health actually provides an accommodation for not wearing a mask. Those two accommodations are either wearing a face shield with draping or continuing to virtually participate. Next slide, please. And actually, C D P H released this face shields F A Qs from November two thousand and twenty, specifically answering these particular questions that if a medical exemption is applied, what is the process for using the face shield and what is the face shield to look like? Next slide, please. So the proposed resolution actually formalizes the direction of March twenty-third meeting for the conduct of in-person meetings, including protocols for in-person attendance at public meetings by the public, employees, and council members during the existence of the state declared emergency for the pandemic. Next slide, please. The resolution that is attached to the staff report itself specifically sets forth the following items. It states that beginning May, the meetings may be conducted, will be conducted with both the city council and public in person with public health measures in place. It states that those public measures in place will include social distancing of six feet, separating persons from different households. All persons will wear a face covering complying with Cal OSHA requirements. Sanitation stations will be placed for hand washing. Staff will clean and disinfect equipment in the meeting room. Temperature checks of all persons entering the meeting room with persons whose temperature is a hundred and point four degrees Fahrenheit will be excluded from the room. And signage will be placed at meeting room entrances, communicating public health measures and protocols. Also, the resolution states that meetings will continue to be available via channel three and online live streams. Public comments may be in person with public health measures in place or via email, and that boarding commission meetings will be held in the same manner as city council meetings. Next slide, please. And before we get, Madam Mayor, and get into questions, comments, discussion, and direction and or adoption of the current resolution as proposed or modified, I would like to go ahead and turn it over to the city attorney at this time for his legal court comments as well.
Thanks, Randy. Peter?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As Randy mentioned, the city is an employer subject to the regulations of the California Division of Occupational Safety and Health, the Cal OSHA, and is subject to those regulations, as I said, as an employer. It is clear from the many, many correspondence that the city has received over the last two weeks that there are some very significant differences of opinion. that there are some very significant differences of opinions as to whether face coverings are necessary to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen and whether face, face coverings may do more harm than good. There are many doctors studying respiratory problems and infectious diseases have reached an opinion that face coverings are not necessary or helpful to the spread of COVID nineteen. And many persons familiar with Cal OSHA, federal OSHA requirements have reached the same conclusions. The question tonight, though, is not whether face coverings are useful or are harmful. The question is not which expert is right and which experts are wrong. Under California law, that decision is left to the public health authorities. The California Public Health Officer, the Director of Industrial Relations that approves the Cal OSHA requirements, and other public health officers in the various counties. This is not a decision of the city council. And these public health officials, and particularly the Director of Industrial Relations for the Cal OSHA regulations, have determined that face coverings are needed to prevent the, the spread of COVID nineteen in the workplace. They do require face coverings in the workplace and for public gatherings. Now, except for regulations affecting religious services and gatherings, the courts will defer to the judgments of the public health officials in determining the validity of those regulations. They determine that there should be some substantial evidence upon which the health officer has relied for making that determination. And in each of these cases, the public health officials have cited various studies that support their position that these regulations would stop or slow the spread of COVID nineteen within the state under those circumstances. Now, again, there are many opinions to the opposite. And so the question becomes, you know, who is the person that makes that decision? And in this case, the courts have deferred to the public health officials in making that decision. There was a lot of question at the beginning of the pandemic as to what the law would be and how far the courts would go. And just at the beginning of last month, the appellate court in Los Angeles upheld the decision of the Los Angeles County Health Officer to prohibit outdoor dining. And the restaurants in Los Angeles County and the State Restaurant Association sued the county to invalidate that regulation. And those plaintiffs, the restaurant associations, submitted detailed expert opinions from many medical experts, both in California and outside of California, to convince the court that the county's decision was wrong. And the appellate court ruled that particularly in a time of pandemic, they needed to defer to the judgment of the public health official. And even though they had not done a specific study on the impacts of outdoor dining, they were justified in relying on the opinion that there was a surge in COVID nineteen cases, that it was a major problem, and that this would help to slow the spread of the COVID disease. As I say, other than the decisions involving religious worship services, this is the only case that appellate case that we have at this point with respect to those regulations. So what that tells us is that by law, the city council must comply with the requirements that are applicable to it of the various health officials and the Cal OSHA requirements. The council can impose more stringent requirements, but you cannot lessen those requirements and really supersede the regulations imposed by the state. There is, we well know from all of the public comments, there are a lot of people in groups that disagree with the regulations and the opinions of the public health officials. But all of those comments and all of those studies should really be directed at those public health officials. Those people in those groups should be petitioning the state to change the regulations if they do not believe that the science backs up that, that position. Now, as Randy mentioned in her discussion, there are exceptions to the mask requirement. And very specifically, the Americans with Disability Act and comparable state laws require that the city must work with the person who may object to wearing a mask, may engage in an interactive and interpersonal discussion as to what reasonable alternatives would be available. That is required by the federal ADA, the state comparable statutes, and is consistent with the Cal OSHA requirements. Reasonable accommodations could take the form, as Randy pointed out, of the face, full face shield with a cloth material at the bottom of the face shield to prevent the respiration particles from leaving the area around the, the person's head. And reasonable accommodations could also take the form of the person participating virtually in the city council meeting. As you know, under the governor's executive order in twenty-nine dash twenty that was adopted back on March the seventeenth of two thousand twenty, at the very beginning of the pandemic, the governor, under the emergency declarations waived many provisions of the Brown Act that required in-person meetings that severely limited the ability of council members to participate via telecommunications. I don't think at that time anybody even knew what Zoom was, but it is part of the telecommunications process. And so there is a viable alternative for people to express their views to the city council and to express their, their concerns and their comments. And then to keep in mind that that alternative becomes even more significant as the, the new technology that Ms. Joel described that could be imposed or that could be adopted and installed in the city council chamber to make that process even easier for people, you know, who may come to the city hall or people who may wish to participate from outside. So I just wanted to add that little bit of, of, of comment on some of the issues that confront us with respect to these regulations.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So are there any questions of staff? None? Nobody? All right. So do we have any comments, Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, several of those comments had crossover to this item, plus this particular meeting in general, plus the topics that we have described during the staff presentation and city attorney comments. So those were all the comments.
Okay, great. All right. So this is the time that we are to just have a discussion of these items. And thank you, staff. You really were very clear in your explanation of how everything works. So anybody want to start?
Stu. Okay, so, you know, basically, if we went to in session, I'd have to wear that space helmet to, to be in session because I can't wear something over my face. And until I actually have it and wear it and see how that affects me, because basically I'm still breathing my own exhale. And so, so that still may be an issue for me. And if that's the case, I would just assume stay in a Zoom setting because that won't do me any good. And in a Zoom setting, especially if you guys are live, you know, in, in, in the the room down there, it would, it would kind of give me a sense that I'm being excluded based on my disability. And so that would be an issue for me that, because, because frankly, anybody who thinks this stops anything, they're a little nuts. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm totally not a believer this does a thing. And so if I sneeze or if I cough, yeah, it might slow something down, but I haven't sneezed or coughed in, in forever. So, so as far as I'm concerned, this is a waste of time. It's a waste of, you know, and, and Cal OSHA, I mean, when you have Fauci saying in a sixty minutes interview, this does absolutely nothing. And then two weeks later, once it became politicized, it's all of a sudden, you gotta wear this to save someone's life. And it's like, so a lot, Surgeon General said the exact same thing. So, so I'm having an issue with this being the lifesaver that everybody thinks it is. So that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, if, if I have to wear the space helmet, I'm gonna have to put it on and make sure I can actually still breathe. Because the way it's designed, it's designed to keep all your exhale inside the space helmet. So I might be passed out in an hour. Who knows, you know? So that, that's where I'm at with that, you know? I'd rather stay in a Zoom setting, sitting in my fresh air office than stuck in a space helmet down in the room down there.
The council chamber?
Yeah, so that's where I'm at. So until I actually have one, I wouldn't even be able to make an educated guess on whether I could actually be in there and in that thing. So that's where I'm at right now.
Stu, you, you, I don't think you've ever said we have kept you from being in a meeting.
No.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just an important point for Councilmember Stewart's concern. And that is, you know, if you did wish to think about that alternative of the space helmet, the city, Human Services Director, Mr. Garibay, would work with you to get samples and to provide you with, you know, other types of masks. So you would have the opportunity to try it out and see what might work and what might not work. This, that's required by the ADA that there be that interactive process to look for something that would work for you.
And really, for me, that's, that's the, that's the only thing that, that I can make an educated guess on is if that works or doesn't work. So until I actually have those and have tried those and, you know, any extended period of time, I'm sorry, I'm just not buying the whole thing. And, and I, I have to wear this below my nose anyways to even breathe. So I'm, I'm wearing it wrong, but somehow that still appeases people because it's over my, I don't know. So that's where I'm at with this whole thing. I'm, I'm just not a believer. And if you want to give me a space helmet, I'll try it and see if it's something I can breathe in. Other than that, I can't even guess.
If I could just make one other comment, there were a lot of people made the comment that the two council members were precluded by the council from, but I want to point out that that was in the staff report last time, that all people, both public and council and staff would be wearing the mask. So it wasn't as if anybody, that, that, that notion that the council member would have to wear staff, that's where that came from. It was the staff report and not any individual comments that were made about particular council members.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I don't think you believe that we've kept you from being in a meeting because we'd all have to wear the mask and I hate them too. So, you know, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how things like that get started, but it, it really bothers me. You know, I really like you guys and I enjoy having everybody together in the same room, face to face, where we can interact and, you know, hug when we're done and everything. And I'm ready for this whole COVID thing to be over. So, okay, so any other questions, any comments, Jess?
All right. Well, I'm gonna change this off just a little bit today, okay? Because we all know, everybody's been handed the science and everybody's been handed, like, like Mr. Peter Horson had talked about, what things look like. Everybody's got their own perspective. But what I want to focus on for a minute here is allowing a person-to-person contact at that meeting and what the importance of it is, not only for us as council members, but how that can really impact our decision as council members for our city. So number one, person-to-person meetings from the experts state that it builds stronger relationships. And I know, Mary Ann, you've, Mayor Mary Ann, you've told me several times that I love it, the fact that you miss us down there because of the relationships. It does. It creates an entirely new environment. And for us as five city council members, it's important to have those relationships because we're here for one cause and one purpose, and that is for our city. Number two, the importance for loyalty and trust. It's very different when I'm looking at somebody eye to eye and, you know, body language, things like that. We can tell, we can take a look at where their integrity is at. And it's so different when we're sitting there across from somebody. Somebody's probably more likely to talk, speak the truth, and speak openly, a little differently than on a Zoom call. It's just very different. Number three, we're more focused and we're way more productive. That's just, it's a case in study. I'll tell, I, I know for a fact, looking at kids who are in the, in their schools, the moms that were online, the moms are saying that these kids are not productive and they're not focused. And I hate to say it, we're, it's the same for us as adults. There's no difference. This is a movie right here for me. This is, this is not even reality. Clear, it actually clearly communicates goals. We are able to communicate goals. And also it makes focusing easier than staring at a screen all day. It's very different environment. And so for myself and Stu getting down there, those, those reasons are really important to me. Because I want to be able to make the correct decisions along with the five of you. I want to be able to create the environment of strong relationships for our city. This has nothing to do with me. This is for our city because this is not the best environment to be working in. And if we can get there and sit there and say we're spaced out, we're six, we're over six feet apart. You know, it's basically, are, are we nervous about it? If somebody's nervous, I say double mask. You know, I, I really don't know what to say, but I need to be down there. It is my obligation to be down there. Sitting up in an office, this is, this is, this is a movie. I'm just sitting here. I don't really feel as if I'm as productive as if I was down there on our first meeting when we were all unmasked and we sat there on that desk and we all had a communication and a great meeting. And that's something we need. We truly need that. I want to see Counselor Ron, I want to see Counselor Schwank's face, I want to see Counselor Stewart. I'd love to see, you know, city council or city, city member, I can't even talk today. Mayor, I just, it just, it just, it bothers me so much. And I'm trying to just get this out because again, this is here, sitting on a video chat in my office by myself. This is not real life. Being in that chamber with everybody, being able to see everybody's face is going to really help and make a difference on how we are going to vote, how we are going to work together as a team, and how we are going to move forward. So for me, I'm not putting anything on my face, but for me, those things of what I just read off are important enough for our city to, to make sure, for them to make sure that we get this done. We need to be down there. That's all, that's all it is. I, that's it. It, it just kills me how we have, I sent everybody OSHA information from OSHA experts and they're telling us that they need to be coming in here, looking at PPE gear, they need to be able to look at things and do their environmental checks when we have masks on. And the fact of the matter is, is they're, they're not going to come in here and do that. That mask is going to make me sick. I used to wear it. I used to get severe headaches. That's just one of the things that used to happen to me. What happens to rape victims? They can't put that mask on. What about the, the people who have mental disabilities? They can't put that mask on. And that shield does the same thing. We are silencing people and we do not know anybody who walks through our door, employees and/or the people who are going to make public comments, what their background is. We have no clue. But we're going to tell them, in order to come in, we're going to force you to put a mask on or something over your face. And not everybody can do that. Not everybody can do that. We don't know people's backgrounds. That's it. It's as simple as that.
Okay, thank you, Jess. Anybody else? Zach?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things, I guess. You know, we heard a lot of public comments tonight and I want to say I'm just kind of frustrated with that narrative, right? You know, we're all sort of in this together in, in
No, we're not.
these videos. We are all using this as a reasonable accommodation right now to participate. So I'm, I'm a little disappointed that that narrative got sort of spun out of control online and we heard that tonight. And then, you know, just the idea of people feeling excluded. It's like, I can't imagine, I, I would not want anyone to feel excluded. And then I would sort of ask, like, you know, is this an exclusion? Do you feel excluded in this setting? And, and we're all participating. I mean, we're here at this meeting at your request, Councilmember Alexander. So there's no exclusion from that perspective, right? Like we're, everyone's voice is being heard. I mean, Stu just spoke up about public financing. So, so I would sort of argue that while it's different, while it isn't traditional, we are still being effective. And just speaking personally, as someone who's been on SCAG for, going on a year and a half now, we, we handled the regional housing needs assessment, arguably probably the biggest thing they've handled in ten years via Zoom. RTA, we kept public transit going. You get the update from our city manager at the end of the year. It is overwhelmingly busier now than we were last year. We have done so much. We are being so productive in this. It's a different way. And while I understand that everyone, uh, wants to get back into that face to face, because I would agree, there are times when you want to meet face to face, which is why I go on bike rides with people, right? Like, so there, there are times where that has a ton of value. Understanding that, you know, some of our youth sports and our public want restrooms at facilities. Like, we know that because we, you know, we've had these conversations with them, right? So we know those things. So that kind of, you know, I, I don't want anyone to feel excluded. And then sort of, and, and I'll, and I'll sort of lean on what, uh, Councilmember Ron said at last meeting. We're sort of all in this or nothing, right? And I think that's what, is what you said, something like, we all have to come to an agreement or not. I certainly don't want to, um, be down in, in the chambers and then, um, you know, sort of come to this agreement and then sort of decide to, you know, you know, freewheel it, so to speak, and, and sort of change on the fly. Uh, what we come out of here tonight needs to be solid, uh, it needs to be enforceable. Um, and, and that's really important. Like, I have a, I have a family, I have young children. You know, we have family members that had reasonable accommodations and that reasonable accommodation was that they were to work virtually. And so I understand, uh, some of the concerns and some of the issues with this, but at the end of the day for me, much like with the MSHCP we just had, there are regulations that we need to follow. There are things that we need to do to protect ourselves, um, from lawsuits. Um, if someone were to get sick at City Hall, um, they could easily file a claim. And we would have to deal with that and, and, and that just doesn't make sense, uh, to me. June 15th is coming up rather quickly where we're starting to see a full reopening. And things are changing rapidly. And while we've been in this for over a year now, and I, I don't think there's anyone out there that, that doesn't want to get back to it. But the, the reality is, is we're almost over with this. We're not going to be wearing masks forever. And, and we're not going to be in this virtual environment forever. We, there will be a time in our very near future that we will be able to safely, uh, re-enter sort of that public sphere where we're able to connect and, and, and meet with folks. And then I'll end on this, as far as, is that connection and accessibility. We have received more public comments in the last year than we probably ever have, right? But you get a hot button issue where a bunch of people come and then it sort of fades away. Um, we have consistently heard from different people. We would have not heard from the affordable housing folks. They would not have the time to come down to this meeting and sit for three and a half hours and listen to us. But they can submit a public comment and that's important too. So, you know, being able to empathize with folks via email without having to directly see them is also an important skill and something that I think as a community, um, and as a council, uh, is important to just recognize that, that participation that we've seen from a diverse group of people, uh, in our community and some not in our community, i- is important to recognize. So I think we're doing a good job at the end of the day and, um, you know, if we can come to an agreement to, you know, whether it's the, the space helmet, I'll wear a, a space helmet in solidarity with, with you, you know? Like, if that's what I have to do, because I do want to build that trust and I do want to build that, 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 um, that sense of community between us that, that is lacking, it is. We can certainly acknowledge that, we haven't had the time to, um, go to concerts in the park together. We haven't had the time to do parades together. There's a lot of things that we do, that's team building, that we haven't had a chance to do, and I acknowledge that. And I think that's important. We will get there, uh, I just want to make sure when we do this, when we return back, that it's done in a safe way, that everybody feels comfortable, no one feels excluded. And if we all have to stay on Zoom, so no one feels excluded, then that's fine with me too. I just want us to move together, uh, as a group. That's all, thank you.
Matt?
Well, I, I guess I'm glad to, to finally understand what the, um, what the goals are, right? Because that's, that's sort of been my question since we last met was the why of why we're, we're having this conversation. You know, Zach, I think you made a really, uh, really good point. You said, you know, it's not traditional, but it's effective, right? We're still doing our job. It's, it's not, um, it's not perfect. I, I would argue that this has been an extremely challenging environment to work in. Uh, and it requires us to have that extra layer of, and level of due diligence that, uh, really upped, I think, a lot of our game, uh, over the last year in order to keep this city, you know, moving forward and, and accomplishing the things that it has. Uh, I personally, uh, just myself, uh, dislike even the format that we have at City Hall under normal circumstances. I don't like sitting behind a dais, it's impersonal, it's, it's even, I would say somewhat confrontational. I like sitting down with a cup of coffee and chatting with folks, having real human contact and real conversation. It's why I started the Coffee with the Mayor when I was mayor a few years back. It's so much more personal, uh, and in a lot of cases can, can often be a lot more productive. But our laws require us to hold meetings in this somewhat impersonal way. And, and certainly the, uh, virtual environment has, has not helped, uh, this at all, right? It's, it's complicated and it's added that additional layer, um, that, that makes, uh, this whole process, uh, challenging. I think it's important that as we speak about and, and, you know, Stu or Jessica, Mary Ann, Zach, doesn't matter who, as we affirm our desires of what we would like to see in this meeting space, it's important to recognize and not dismiss that there are risks that others perceive. Right? Based on what we witnessed, witnessed over the last year, that risk is real and I hope we're not debating that here, right? But even if we are, even if you reject the science and believe that the risk is merely perceived and it's not real, then sadly, we're imposing one belief system in favor of another. Right? Doesn't matter what way we go, there is a cost and a benefit to whatever action we do. So I want us to acknowledge that upfront, is that no matter what decision we make, that's what's happening. Now, I'm a scientist, been doing this my whole life. And, uh, firmly believe that, that, you know, it has for the better, um, advanced society. Uh, and, and in particular, public health and medicine. In the sciences, we operate under what we call the precautionary principle. This has been around for a really long time, it's been evoked in a number of different forms, but it has one basic premise. And it says, when an activity raises a threat of harm to health or safety of a human, precautionary measures should be taken, even if some cause and effect relationships are not fully established scientifically or well-understood. That's one of the most basic tenants of medicine and public health. And that's what we've been operating under, under this past year. So what do we have available to us as options? We have the hierarchy of control, right? That is, you know, OSHA, y- you know, whatever format you want to, uh, to adopt, it starts from most effective to least effective, most effective, eliminate the hazard. Well, we haven't eliminated COVID, right? The next one is substitute, replace the hazard. Well, again, not a feasible solution, right? I'm not sure how we're going to accomplish that. These first two solutions, most effective, also tend to be the most difficult to implement. Doesn't matter what sort of condition you're working under, under OSHA, that is the most difficult to implement, if not impossible in some cases like what we're facing here. The next level down is engineering controls. Isolate people from the hazard, it's designed to remove the hazard at the source before it comes into contact with people. That's what we're doing here tonight, right? We are under an engineering control, we have all isolated ourselves into a separate space and we have engineered our control as best as we can. The next two and the last two are administrative controls, changing the way people work. And the very last thing that we have at our disposal to protect us from hazards is personal protective equipment. That is the very last thing. And yet unfortunately, in a lot of cases, and I don't care if you're talking about military or law enforcement or public health or firefighting, PPE tends to be the first thing people turn to, right? And we skip those, those, those other steps. But we do recognize the value and important of people, importance of PPE. But masks and Stu, I, I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, right? Masks, I don't think they work, okay? But there's effectiveness there, right? Doctors wouldn't have been wearing masks for the last hundred years if they didn't provide some level of protection, either for themselves or for the patients, right? It's been pretty well established, so there's not a lot of debate there. But if, let's just say that there's limited effectiveness and it depends on the type of mask and how you wear it and people touch their face and touch the mask and adjust things and, you know, there are lots of failures in PPE. To be certain, there are lots of things we do that are ineffective. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples, just to sort of put this in the context of where my thinking is. Seat belts reduce the risk of death by 45% and the risk of serious injury by 50%. They are definitely not perfect. In fact, early implementation of seat belts actually caused injuries in many kinds of accidents. But we didn't abandon their use. Compared to no screening, screening every two years reduces breast cancer deaths in females by 26%. I'm sure that those in that 26% would argue that that is a huge success. And undoubtedly, a significant risk reduction. Death rate per a thousand homes, uh, in, in fires, uh, is reduced by only 55% in homes with working smoke alarms. But yet they're required in all of our homes, they are not a perfect solution, right? But they're still required. Half a million earthquakes occur on this planet every year. Only about a hundred of them actually cause damage and even fewer still cause catastrophic damage. And yet we have model building codes established by research and expert consensus. It is definitely not perfect and Greg, I think you could speak to that. It is definitely, you know, Pat, our earthquake code is not perfect and science is improving along the way. But we adopted those as cities despite that substantial uncertainty. And last one, bicycle helmets. When we adopted bicycle helmets and, and really pushed that, you know, when I was a kid, we didn't wear bicycle helmets, that wasn't even a thought, right? The thought process though, and the reason it was sold to the public was because they said it's going to reduce injuries, head injuries in children by nearly 90%. And you know what? We found out that's actually not true, it's actually more like 60%. But that's still pretty good, right? I mean, again, it's success nonetheless. So, you know, we could talk about how things aren't perfect. A mask isn't there to prevent anything, right? A mask is there to help reduce risk. It is not a 100% perfect solution, no more than, than, you know, any other standards are, right? So, so I just want to put that out there, is that, you know, let's not confuse the conversation here. Now, I'm going to say something that I haven't said before, which is, and I'm just going to make an assumption here, that I'm the only council member who is actively engaged in research in public safety, specifically PPE, specifically occupational exposures and specifically respiratory protection, albeit with firefighters. Arguably, I'm one of the few, maybe in the nation, that's a city council member that also works in that same space. So my perspective is going to be extremely different from a lot of folks. Over a decade ago, the National Fire Protection Association established standards for wildland firefighter respiratory protection. And Chief Crater can speak to this because you will see firefighters, thousands of them across this nation, responding to wildland and urban interface fires, breathing in some of the most toxic carcin, known carcinogenic and hazardous substances on this planet with zero respiratory protection. Why? Because we haven't really created that solution yet. And so for the last 10 years, we've been struggling with it. I know very deeply and, and firsthand how difficult it is to meet respiratory protection standards. 100% agree how, how, how challenging this is. But I've had the opportunity to work with national laboratories and experts in public health, engineering, materials design. And I know that solutions work, they are not perfect. Is a wildland respirator going to protect a firefighter from getting cancer 100% certain? Absolutely not. You know, we will never reach that standard. But as cancer emerged as the second leading cause of firefighter death, even if we can't reach 100% effectiveness, even if we get that 25% effectiveness, arguably that is success. Now, I'll, 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 I'll end by saying this, I think of the crises that we've faced over the last year, I would think that public health messaging is one of the biggest crises that we've actually had, right? Advice is now binary, yes or no, right? Science and medicine work in the gray areas, always has, always will, right? There was never 100% certainty. And so this messaging crisis happened almost from the very beginning. It happened when the World Health Organization waffled on asymptomatic transmission very early on in the pandemic. And then they said, no, 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 that is an issue, that is an issue we need to be concerned with. It was confused by, by contradictory messaging by federal and state and county officials across the nation. And it created confusion and distrust among the population, right? Folks who are not experts in public health. And it's happening again as states start to reopen. This, I would argue, is probably the biggest failure of the pandemic itself. Sadly, that poor leadership means that now masks are a political debate in the belief system. Masks are just a simple device that can help reduce risk. Uniquely, I find it interesting that you don't hear, hear your similar arguments against hand washing, coughing or sneezing into your sleeve or social distancing. Again, none of these things are 100% effective. You know, but the research on this subject is fascinating. Defining acceptable risk for us to go into the council chambers and say, my level of risk is going to be absolutely different than Zach's or Mary Ann's or Jessica's or, or Stu's. We will all have a perceived difference in, in acceptable risk. And it has a lot to do, wearing a mask, going through these different, you know, uh, uh, control mechanisms that we have administrative through, you know, PPE. You know, one of the things, when we talk about the level of risk, depends on whether a person believes they're going to be personally affected by COVID, right? But it also has to do with how much a person is being asked to give up to avoid, you know, getting COVID. Like, wearing a mask, you're giving up something when you're asked to wear a mask, there's no doubt in that. How convenient or inconvenient to measure is, or how costly were usually the biggest indicators for how likely somebody was to use a mask or use, and, you know, some sort of mitigation that OSHA recommended, right? It had to do with, you know, how easy it was and how much it cost. But today, belief systems, if you read the research on it, override all of those factors to the point where even small and inexpensive measures are debated and rejected because of belief systems. And this isn't anything new, right? This isn't unique to COVID-19, far from it. In most cases, we relive the same issues that were deeply entrenched in public crises over a century ago. And even further, if you read the history on this, this is the same story, just a different century.
Yeah.
Right? And so then, as in now, people are scared, right? They feel stripped of dignity by officials who don't feel, that, who, who, you know, they feel don't really respect them. Or officials who fail to understand their traditions or beliefs. What people needed then and what they demand today is for somebody to listen to them and to feel like they have some agency. And that's what it's, it's important here. And that's where I'm saying, I hear you, James Stewart, Jessica Alexander, I 100% hear you both, because that's important. I hope we can reach some kind of consensus, consensus, some mutual understanding, some sort of compromise here. But if we can't, we have two options. We continue with the status quo, what we're doing right now, until health orders and, and these guidelines are lifted. Or we have to follow reasonable accommodations under OSHA. Anything in between there, um, is challenging, you know? And, you know, I'll say, I'll say, there's an old adage in public health, the population is the patient, not the individual. Doctors and nurses care about the individual, or, you know, absolutely. But in public health, it's the population. And decisions, albeit unpopular and divisive, are based on the protection of the population. Going all the way back to what I talked about at the beginning with the precautionary principle. It's not popular to hear, it's a very stark and candid truth, but it's how we manage public health. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop there because I think I've probably said enough for tonight, but I just wanted to be very candid and very open my, uh, my opinions about, about a lot of these issues, thank you.
Well, that was great, Matt, because you, you brought the data and you brought the, the scientific background. And then there are those who argue that, you know, and you already said, science has contradicted itself so many times in this issue. And then I think And then I think where the wheels fell off occurred when it became political, one, one side or the other. And if you wore a mask, you, you know, you like this person or this, this political belief. And if you didn't wear a mask, you were this, you know, political belief. I'm going to bring this down to the people factor. And I, I don't like wearing masks. I don't like being separated from my colleagues. I love my colleagues and I think we work great together. And do we disagree? Of course we do, but we come out of it as friends and we work things out. And that's the way this council has always functioned. And that's the way that successful councils do function. And I care about each one of the colleagues. I haven't kept anybody from participating in these meetings. In fact, I, I, you know, I'm ready to sit upstairs all in one tiny little room if we could. And again, I do not like wearing a mask either. It makes me so hot. I have to carry a fan, a little fan with me. So, but when we accepted these positions or this position as council member, we took an oath, of course, to uphold the constitution of the state of California and of the United States. But we are ultimately the voice and the action takers of the people that we represent. And I hear you guys and I, I believe that you suffer with the mask and I, you know, again, I don't like wearing them either. I feel claustrophobic like you do, Stu, and I don't have a, a, you know, a medical condition. Well, maybe getting, you know, terribly hot could be considered a medical condition because I do get miserably hot. But I totally agree with you and sympathize with you. I have to sit here also, of course, I listen to the, the comments that we get and I have friends who are writing comments in and I, I talk to them. I'll text them or email them after the meeting and we'll have a discussion about the letters that they've written. And I will continue to say that I feel it is my job and has always been my job in this position. Whether it were, you know, was in a district of twenty-three thousand people or a city of a hundred and fourteen thousand people. I have to listen to the other one hundred thousand thirteen, you know, ninety-nine people. I have to listen and think about all those people and I know that people are passionate on both sides. Uh, and there are people who are genuinely afraid. Maybe they've lost family members. We look at the flags at the duck pond and we know so many people uh, are represented in those flags, but not just the people who passed away, but the families who are left behind and didn't have a chance to say goodbye. It's tragic. So those things are real and fears are real. And some people choose to believe the science in just the way that Matt described. As a preventative measure that when combined with lots of other smaller preventative measures can make a difference. And so they're ready to follow those guidelines to lessen the risk for themselves and their family. How can I intentionally violate the rules when as a public official, I have sworn to uphold those rules, number one? And number two, while I have to set an example for every resident who is also obeying and complying with the rules, I think that would be sending a terrible message. As much as I want us to all be together again, um, as we were and you know, be able to read your body language and, and, and the same thing with our residents. I love meetings where we have a lot of residents and even when we have contentious topics because it gets everybody's passion up. And I think we get to see the best of people and sometimes we see the worst of people. But we're all together in this. I cannot in good conscience suggest or support not wearing the masks if we choose to be in this environment together, separated by distance. When other people have to wear the masks. I mean, if we're gonna really take it seriously, we have to wear the masks according to the county and state uh, until further notice. Now, I will be prepared to do anything I can to help you, Stu, for you to find something that works for you. And maybe it will work for me too and just to find something, I don't know, that works for you. And maybe it would work for me and keep me from getting so horribly hot behind that mask. But they've given us choices and none of the choices is good. So you can choose to be separated and just know, you're sitting there right now, you're not with me, but I'm still talking to you. I don't feel like I'm talking to the television set where it, there are characters on the screen. You're, you're still my friends and my colleagues. I'm still talking to you. And it hasn't seemed to dampen anybody's passion or opinions. So that's the good part. And the other thing I guess I want to say is you saw Director Pat Thomas's report and all the things that we've done through planning and Luke's report, all the things we've done through community development. You've seen community services is astounding, everything that they've been doing. So we have been productive. Jess, you have, don't feel like you haven't. You have been productive. We formed a ready commission and it's one of the, you know, that's a milestone in the state of California and in the country really. And that was a huge undertaking and it could have been fraught with political, um, you know, potholes, but we handled it very well and we got eighty applications. We've never gotten that many applications for a commission before. So see, that was not a failure. You were productive and you put that committee together and they're already working to help us make sure that everybody feels included. So I'm ready to do whatever it takes to make, you know, you all feel comfortable or so that it works for you. But at the same time respecting the other a hundred and fourteen thousand residents that are out there that, you know, I don't hear from. Except in my email, I get emails from them, but they aren't writing public comments. That doesn't mean that they don't have opinions. They do. And what I'm seeing in public is I still see most people, almost all people wearing masks. Every once in a while, I'll see a few people that don't and I certainly don't say anything to them. I'm wearing my mask, uh, so I feel like that I'm protected and I've gotten both of my vaccinations. So really I'm not at risk nor am I at risk for anyone else, but I'm doing it out of respect for my residents who have to wear masks be, because they want to obey the law. So that's kind of where I am until further notice, I feel like we have to obey the law. So our choices are sit here and wear masks at a distance. And I don't like wearing a mask either. And I think it's hard for people to understand you when you talk, uh, you know, in the microphone and all that. Or it's to stay the, the way we are. So, um, that's what it's going to come down to and we need to make this decision. So.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And maybe it's for the, uh, city manager or the city attorney. I was just sent a picture of the Menifee City Council and they have plexiglass between each one, they're six feet apart and no masks. And so in, it's right there on their YouTube channel. Once they, once they're seated at their seat, they remove their masks and they're completely maskless with plexiglass in between. Now, I heard you can't do that, but yet they're doing that. So, so could you address that?
Let's do that. There are council, councils that aren't wearing masks at all. I mean, there are councils that are sitting close to get, I mean, you could, it runs the gamut. It just, you know, depends on what the will of that council is. Um, and I think that the councils that are meeting close together and not doing anything are doing a big disservice to their residents who feel like they have to wear the mask and they're doing it because it's the law and they're, even though it's not a law, it's a mandate and they're doing it because it's a mandate. It's not a law. And that's another thing that's been very frustrating, huh? Yeah, but it is a mandate. Um, and we are compelled to, um, you know, honor that mandate. So I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Stu. And when, and as we were reading all of those acceptable things, I was looking for the plexiglass and no mask and I, and it's, and it's not there, right? Right, Peter? I mean, what do you?
Yeah, actually, Cal OSHA said specifically that even if you have plexiglass, you still need to wear a mask. So I don't, I don't know what Menifee did. I don't know whether they just decided not to obey the law or if they, you know, somehow interpreted that they didn't have to do it, but you know, the Cal OSHA requirements do require a mask even with the plexiglass.
If I have to say something, according to Tyler and, I think it's Bersh. I know, uh, Peter, you probably know better than I saying that.
Yeah.
Tyler and Bersh, am I saying?
Tyler and Bersh, Bob Tyler.
Absolutely, Bob Tyler.
Oh, I know him. I know him.
Absolutely. So I've spoken to him and, and his office several times. And, uh, they've actually worked with Lynn Fields that is obviously in our city. They work with Rancho Christian and they work with another Christian school in town in stating that there are medical exemptions and in between all of my kids, there is plexiglass. And so the parents, if their children have medical exemptions, they let the school know and their child can sit there with a plexiglass and they're not six feet apart because I've seen it. They're desk to desk with, uh, with a partition in between them. And that was okay. And that went to, that went to, to the courts for that and they cleared that. So that's why there, there's something that we're not catching. And I, I know that already this law firm and there's another one that want to be able to give us more information. They're just on vacation right now, of course, of all days. But it's already been passed. That's why I'm not understanding why we're having certain places go to courts and they're saying it's okay to do it. We're having city councils go ahead and do it and then, but we're saying we're not going to do it.
But Jess, I, I, I know through experience with the district that schools were deemed to, to be different. They, they were different and they, they got what they call waivers and they had to fill out paperwork and, um, you know, do all kinds of demonstrations to show what they were doing to, to maintain their distance. So that could be, I am not an attorney and I know Bob Tyler and, you know, I've just been married to an attorney for forty-five years. But, um, so I know schools, districts were different. Why? That's another thing that drives me crazy. Why is this group treated this way and it's okay? But yet this group is not treated this way when that group, they, you know, look like the same thing. They're in a classroom, but this one can and this one can't. Yeah, that's been as.
I would, I would certainly like to see the court decision that says that's okay. And I'd also like to see now, if, if my memory is correct, that both of those are religious schools.
Yes.
And as I mentioned earlier, the one place where the courts do not defer to public health authorities is if there are religious rights involved. You know, that came out of the US Supreme Court decisions back at the end of last year. You know, with respect to the Archdiocese of Brooklyn and a couple of the California cases that made it up there. Um, and that is because there is a special place in the First Amendment to protect the free exercise of religion. And so the standard is much higher. You know, the standard is you have to have, uh, you have to act in the least restrictive means and provide alternative, uh, you know, uh, sources to, to fulfill the religious rights while at the same time protecting an essential governmental interest. So that, I don't know if that's the, the difference or not, but where you see, uh, religious schools, where you see religious worship services, um, a lot of their practices are different because of the First Amendment rights that they have, that they can, uh, re, force the government to, to provide different, uh, regulations for them. But I would definitely like to see what court decision that was that, uh, that upheld that.
And they do get, you know, waivers for that reason. So, um, I know it's tough.
I'll get, it's Peter, I'll definitely get that for you. So.
Yeah, no, I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
That would be really good. Maybe connect a lot of meetings with three of us. So that'd be great.
That brings us back to where we were. We have to come to a decision. I want to respect each of you and I have extreme empathy for you as my great, great friends. I mean, Jessica, you and I were friends even before we knew each other. After I ran into you in this door and we talked and I didn't even know who you were. That was two years ago. So we hit it off then. So, um, we have to find a, a solution for this. And just know that if we come to the conclusion that we have people still in their offices upstairs, don't, don't, don't feel like you're apart. You know, I, I still get to see you on the screen, but you do respond, you know, it's not like watching television. You do respond and I, and I do hear you and we are all listening. It's just not exactly the same, but I think under certain circumstances, if we're going to set an example for our residents who are abiding by the law or rule and wearing masks, then that's what we're going to have to do. So, uh, what's your pleasure? Help me. Matt?
Just a, just a couple of quick thoughts. You know, Jessica, I'm, I'm thinking what you said earlier about relationships and loyalty and trust. And I was just, I was, I was thinking about it because it struck me that, you know, I, I wondered if I, you know, had we been in the room, had things, you know, gone differently, you know, would I have voted differently on, on items, um, you know, and were those, were, were there, were there things in the past several months that I, you know, was on the edge about? And in-person, you know, communication might have changed. And, and I, I have to say, as I was, we're sitting here, I just kind of scrolled through some of our last few agendas over the, you know, last few months. And, uh, you know, unlike the WHO or the CDC, I wouldn't have waffled on anything, right? I mean, and, and, and partly because some of these decisions are just pretty much straightforward. You've got, you know, you've got your, your, your opinion about them. You, you're, you're going to vote the way you're going to vote. And that in person wouldn't have really, uh, uh, changed my opinion. But I'll, I'll also say that what we're talking about here goes a lot deeper than just the city council, right? It's also about the public and the visitors to City Hall. And we also need to take into account the staff that are here, those folks who are working here day in, day out, doing the work of the city. That's when I talked earlier about population, that's the population we need to be worried about, right? As a city council, we're part-time, you know, we're part-time employees technically, right? And, uh, you know, I say employees specifically because we have to follow the same rules and policies and procedures of the city that everybody else does. And we're not special, right? Our mere presence at City Hall shouldn't upend the city's existing policies and procedures that were carefully designed and heavily scrutinized to keep everybody safe.
Right.
Right? So the things that, that the city manager and other folks have done to be able to reopen City Hall were done very carefully in consultation with experts and following OSHA guidelines and everything else. And while there may be some court cases and things that we need to find out about, you know, they've even gone that step further to have direct consultation with Cal OSHA to see, you know, what the limitations are and, and their ability to do things. And so our mere presence at City Hall shouldn't upend those policies and procedures. We need, I think, to show a little bit of leadership and support the very real and very tough decisions that they've already had to make to ensure an open, safe and functioning City Hall.
And for the public too.
And for the public too, right? Because it's not, again, it's not about us. So, you know, I also don't want us to create an atmosphere of dissent that gives agency to the public to reject these same protocols using the excuse and saying, well, the city council does it, right? Because then the system just falls apart, right? It's also why I don't speed when I'm driving in Temecula, right? I mean, you know, it, I, I might not agree with the speed limit on some of those streets, but, but I sure, sure follow it, right? And so that's the place we're at. And if we're going to continue being a city of laws and, and, and following, you know, those, those guidelines, frankly, I don't care what Menifee does. You know, they can do whatever they want to do. We're not Menifee. We never have been and we never will be. We're the city of Temecula. You know, and, and, you know, that's, I, I, I'd love to be able to find a, a, a good compromise here, but I'm, I'm having a hard time figuring out what that might look like. Uh, but I'll wear a space helmet in solidarity with all of you. I'll continue doing this in solidarity with all of you. Whatever it means, as long as we, you know, reach some sort of, uh, decision where we say we've, you know, hopefully found some sort of, uh, sort, sort of good compromise or we just simply ride this out until we're able to go back to life as normal.
And I will do that. I will not shave my head, but I will do that, you know, just in solidarity. So Stu, you had your hand up and then I saw you too, Zach.
Yeah, my, okay. So, um, I like everything you've said, Matt. You've kind of hit a lot of buttons for me and, um, so I mean, to move this discussion along, I would like to stay in a Zoom sta, setting for at least a few more weeks. You know, because I'd like to see what happens to like a Menifee or what other cities, um, have done. And will Cal OSHA react? And, uh, you know, it's, it's a very fluid situation right now. So I'm, I'm like totally okay in my office right now. So I, I don't, I don't have the burning desire to wear that space helmet for, you know, a four hour meeting either. So, um, for me personally, I'm okay staying in the Zoom setting and let this thing play out for a little bit longer. And let's see what happens because, you know, I, I really think what you're going to see is there's going to be political pressure put on the Cal Oshias and, uh, the state to change a lot of the mask mandates. So, and, and, you know, if that be the case, great, we're going to be in, uh, our city council chambers before we know it. And so I just don't necessarily know if I And so I just don't necessarily know if I want to, um, put the city in a position of defending a, uh, a, a Cal OSHA case. And so that, that's my only concern about that. I don't have any concern about being out there or, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm good. So, but just from a legal standpoint, I could, I could be totally okay staying in a Zoom setting. Let's let this thing air out a little longer and just see where we're at two weeks, you know, maybe four weeks from now. Um, so that's where I'm standing right now. So go ahead, Zach.
Well, thank you, Stu.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, right.
And so, you know, the, now that you summed it up with the, we're not whatever, right? We're not Riverside County Board of Supervisors. We're not another city. There's many cities that are doing things and they've been doing things that are, uh, are, um, you know, prop- following proper protocols. The thing that keeps coming back to me and, and I know Mary Ann is, is, is a long-timer. This has been, you know, thrown around a ton. It's the Temecula way. It is, this is who we are as leaders. This is our role in the city is to define what that Temecula way is. And it isn't, um, sort of just, you know, throwing out, um, you know, guidelines and doing whatever we want. It is leading, uh, our community and our entire community. So I think it's important, um, that we sort of just acknowledge that. And Matt, you spoke to that a little bit. Stu, I like what you're saying. Um, and I, I would even just sort of throw out and say, look, we're gonna see, uh, June fifteenth as a sort of that full reopening. You know, we could revisit this, stay virtual until, uh, the twenty-second of June, which would, that would be the meeting after the fifteenth. That's really not that long, long of a time. Uh, things are changing quickly. And, uh, we could just sort of revisit that on, on the twenty-second, um, of June after you, you get that, that reopening and the different guidelines and things that we know are coming. We've lived through these, the evolution of a lot of this, right? So, um, and that would just be my recommendation at this point.
Okay. So Jess, what are you thinking?
Not putting it on. I wanna be down there.
I know. I want you down here too.
I'm not, I just, yeah, I mean, and I, I totally understand what Matt's saying. We're, we're just at a point where we totally, everybody just, we are in separate areas of disagreement. We disagree in different areas. Um, my concern, uh, Zach, is the fact that come June, how long is that gonna last? Will we stand up and say, okay, we're back in session, let's say in June? And let's say what happens when September, October roll around and we gotta be back in masks? What then? When is enough? When is enough enough? When is it to the point to where they're gonna stop telling us what to do with a disease or with a virus that is ninety-nine point nine-four to a hundred percent recovery rate according to the CDC in October? When are we gonna stop? I mean, if we wanna say, hey, let's go till June on, on Zoom, let's go to Zoom, uh, let's go on Zoom. But what, and when we come back together in June, are we gonna say that's it? Or are we gonna be forced again back to this in September, October, November, summer, when the flu season hits again? Cuz there was no flu this year. That went away. COVID cured the flu. What, what's, what, what do you think exactly? What's your thought of how we would handle that?
Well, I, what I had said is, um, we would revisit it, obviously, at that meeting. And, and again, you know, follow, follow the guidelines, you know? This isn't about just doing what, what we want, you know, we have to follow the guidelines. Much like some of the agenda items tonight, there are guidelines that we have to follow. This is one of those things. And I understand your frustration. But the, at the end of the day, you know, I, uh, as an elected official, can't in good conscience just do whatever I want and not follow, um, the guidelines and, and things set forth. Now, if things change and we revisit that at that June twenty-second meeting, then, you know, listen, I wanna be back in as much as anybody else. And, and quite frankly, you know, if we need to connect offline, um, I think that's important. I've had coffee with, uh, most all the council members. I think, you know, we go outside and we sit and have a cup of coffee.
One at a time.
No, of course, you know, and, but that's important. That, those are the, some of those connections that we're lacking, right? So we're trying to mitigate that in some way. But to answer your question, like, I, I, I think the end of the day, we have an obligation to follow the, follow the, the guidelines, follow the law. Um, and it's just who we are as a community and we should, we should recognize that.
So my last thing that I just wanna say, because you touched on a great point, Zach. But I think something that we can all understand and agree with is, look at Rosa Parks. She was accommodated in the back of the bus. But she finally took a stand and moved to the front because she knew that that wasn't lawful. It wasn't true. So she took a stand. At what point in time do we? At what point in time do we? I, I, you know, I'm getting to the point where I'm getting accommodated in my office. I'm getting pushed to the back of the bus. This is what I'm telling you. I feel like, I feel like I'm getting pushed to the back of the bus. At what point in time do I come out and, and stand up and say I've had enough? And that's what I'm doing. Because for the last year, I've had to go around because, not because I've wanted to always go around without a mask, but the fact of the matter is, is I cannot put it on. I will not put it on. So it's not that I wanna be disrespectful. But the fact of the matter is, is when is enough enough? And it's been a year. Enough is enough. That's just where I stand. So, that's it.
Anyone? Well, are we ready to make a motion?
I guess we make a motion to, uh, continue doing what we're doing and revisit it after June fifteenth in the first, uh, council meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Alexander?
Nine.
Mayor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart? Councilmember Stewart?
Stu!
All right. I, I was still debating in my head.
I thought you were on mute.
No, I was not mute. I was still thinking. Um, I'll say yes.
Councilmember Schwank?
Yes.
All right, so that passes four to one and we will go until June and see what happens. In the meantime, then we're gonna stay in a virtual environment. Okay, so moving on, Mr. City Manager, if you give a really quick report, we won't have to extend until ten-ten.
I have nothing tonight.
Well, that was quick. City? Peter?
Yes, uh, just very briefly, in the closed session tonight, the council did give us some direction as to how to handle that matter. And, uh, we will get back to the, uh, council later on to advise you as to what has occurred.
Okay, thank you. The city has, um, something sad to talk about. Um, we have a colleague, a dear and beloved colleague who was at the city many, many years and retired a couple of years ago. And we received word in, you know, within the last ten days, I think, that he suddenly passed away. And it was very sudden, no warnings, uh, no illness. And, um, I, I think he was a very young and vibrant person and was a great, uh, staff member. And it was John DeGangi and he was in charge of our entire GIS system, which was a huge, uh, undertaking, huge project, huge responsibility. And he was really, uh, there at the time when we, um, added and expanded the GIS system to what it is today. And it's an amazing, uh, program that benefits residents and, uh, staff. And, um, so on, I would like to adjourn in his memory. And say that, tell his family that, that, you know, you two will always be a part of the city family and anything that we can do to help you, uh, uplift you, support you, we are there for you. So don't hesitate to call. And so let's adjourn this meeting in the memory of friend and colleague, John DeGangi. So I take a motion.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you.